Hey, welcome, everybody. We are here for our board meeting on May 19th. And I think we'll go ahead and commence at 9:01 a.m. And with that, Executive Director Ross, will you take roll call?
President Haley?
Present.
Dr. Hagerman is not with us. Superintendent Horn? Member Kat Neese? Dr. Clay?
Present.
Dr. Core?
Here.
Dr. Cruz Rivera?
Here.
Dr. Hightower? Member Krevikis? Member Myerson?
Here.
Dr. Webke?
Here.
President Haley, you have a quorum.
Fantastic. Well, thank you. And just as a quick reminder for the meeting, for those that are joining us virtually, when we do votes and things of that nature, will you please take yourself off, not mute, but put yourself on screen and so we can see you. That would be fantastic. Just a few, I'll do a quick president's report. First of all, we're really grateful that so many of you have joined us in person today and many online. At last month's meeting, we shared that the handbook would be temporary pulled to allow ADE opportunity to gather additional stakeholder feedback and make further improvements on the 2025-2026 handbook. We understand that there are concerns about the timeline, particularly the decision to consider approval at our June 29th meeting. However, with our May meeting taking place so early, we just had our last one three weeks ago due to the Memorial Day schedule. This is really to ensure that there is sufficient time for public feedback, for ADE to thoughtfully consider input, and for the board to carefully review that final version. So we are thrilled that ADE has announced that it will host a virtual town hall on June 10th. I believe families that are participating in the ESA have received notification of that and that they'll also provide opportunities for written feedback. As I mentioned previously, the board is really hopeful that all stakeholders will have an opportunity to work together to shape the ESA handbook in order to ensure that families have a really clear and comprehensive guidance that they need to ensure that they can guide their children's education. Due to the number of items on today's agenda, concerns about and some concerns about quorum will be limiting public comment to non-agenda items to 90 minutes. Each speaker will have two minutes to give their remarks. And as we stated at our last meeting, we just would really request that individuals direct their comments to the content and substance of issues before them rather than at individuals. So with that, we really appreciate your cooperation and we have no doubt that it will be a productive meeting. So with that, I believe I hand it over to you, Superintendent Horn.
In the interest of time, I'll pass this month.
All right. With that, we have Executive Director Ross, the best time of the day.
President Haley, Superintendent Horn, members of the board. This is, I think, everybody's favorite part of the meeting where we honor a couple of amazing kids from across the state as State Board Students of the Month. We have two students that we're honoring today. Our first student is going to appear virtually from Pima High School because she has graduation practice, which is awesome. And so our first student is Megan Farren. She's a graduating senior at Pima High School nominated by her principal, Cody Barlow. She said, Cody said that Megan is dependable, conscientious, high achieving, 4.0 grade point average throughout high school, including many dual enrollment courses, graduating with an associate's degree before graduating from high school, qualified for Nationals in Future Business Leaders of America in '22 and '24, placed fifth nationally in sales presentation, is a president of Skills USA, qualified for Nationals in '24, member of National Honor Society, all around amazing person. And so Megan, go ahead.
All right. Hi, can you all hear me? Okay, good. Hello, my name is Megan Farren and I'm a senior at Pima High School. I owe the honor of receiving this award to my high school. And one of the many reasons I love Pima High School is the student-to-teacher ratio. The teachers are already highly qualified and work their hardest to make sure we succeed. And due to the small size of my school, we students get a very good personalized experience. This has allowed me to build connections with my teachers, to increase my understanding of subjects, and has also allowed me opportunities for my teachers to recommend me for clubs and competitions. Throughout my time in high school, I've accomplished many things. My teachers, leaders, and family have all inspired me to take on challenges that have led me to some of my most significant accomplishments. I took advantage of everything that my school allowed me to take and the different competitions I was invited to attend to represent my school. In high school, I used the relationships I had formed with my teachers to better understand the subjects, and I would use the competitions to have guidance. For example, last year, I participated in the club offered at my high school, the Future Business Leaders of America. This club was recommended to me by one of my teachers in my first year of high school, and I worked with this teacher for years as she helped me work on my technical and presentation skills. Last year, my teammate and I competed in the sales presentation event. I had teachers who would offer us guidance or insights on our presentation's visuals, organizations, and effectiveness. We had teachers who we could access who had a large amount of experience with graphic design, and we also had a primary teacher who taught us about our presentation skills. With the additional effort, my teammate and I had the honor to represent Pima High School at the FBLA Nationals Conference last year, and we placed fifth in the sales presentation out of the entire nation. Others thought we would not be that successful compared to the other larger and richer schools based on our school being from a small town. Still, we put in all the effort we could and took advantage of the connections our school offered us, and we not only accomplished something for ourselves, but also for our school. I learned that you can succeed through hard work, no matter the circumstances. As I graduate this month, I am preparing to attend college this summer. I was accepted into the early admissions at the University of Florida and plan to start my journey there during the Summer B semester in a few months. I have already received my general associates and CAD Level 2 certification from Eastern Arizona College, and I plan to continue my career goals in architectural design and theme park design. I hope to use these techniques, skills, and experiences I have learned from my school and teachers to master my skills in the design of structures so that maybe one day I can even motivate someone else to pursue studying their passions and for them to also use every opportunity, just like I have, as a student at Pima High School. Thank you.
Well, that's incredible, and I think you're going to be in the right place in Florida to help design future parks. So wow, sounds like the future is really bright for you, Megan. We're, congratulations on all of your accomplishments. We're certainly awe of you and yeah, fantastic. I think right now we'll want to take a photo with you. We'll do, we haven't done a virtual one, so I think we'll stand on the side of the screen if that works. Okay.
Congratulations, Jenna.
Thank you so much.
Thank you, Megan.
Thank you.
President Haley, Superintendent Horn, members of the board. Our next student drove up all the way from Yuma this morning with her mom. Yes, we're very thankful that she's here with us today. Alessa Gross is a fifth-grade student at Amerischools North in Yuma, Goss, excuse me, Alessa Goss, is a fifth-grade student at Amerischools North in Yuma, was nominated by school administrator Joseph Sanchez, who said that Alessa is intelligent, kind, comes to school prepared, to learn, and always goes above and beyond, enjoys helping fellow students, is on the honor roll all year, received the Good Citizenship Award and the Principal's Award last year, and is active in clubs. So Alessa, why don't you come on up and speak to the board?
Hi, my name is Alessa Goss. I am in fifth grade at Amerischools Academy North in Yuma, and I am honored to be here. I have only been at my school for two years, but I love it. Everybody there encourages you to be your very best, and the teachers and students have always been there for me, so I try and be there for them too. My parents inspire me to be empathetic towards others through their unconditional love. My little brothers inspire me to be creative through their curiosity, and my little sister inspires me through her silliness. My accomplishments are being in student council and being voted most improved in soccer. I've always been a school-loving nerd, and I'm proud of it. I think my love of school has always helped me. I've learned from my school that you always have to try your best to learn. I also learned how to teach from helping classmates, and I learned you must be willing to think hard and work hard, even if school is boring sometimes. The biggest factor in my growth as a student has been my teachers. They show me what I have done wrong, what I have done right, and I know they care about me. Another important factor in my growth has been my parents, who have helped me grow every single day of my life and prepare me for what is to come. They all help me be my absolute best. Next year, I plan to run for student council president. In high school, I want to focus on academics, soccer, and extracurricular activities. For college, I would like to attend Northern Arizona University in Flagstaff. And there, I plan to major in teaching and minor in music. After that, I hope to become a teacher to inspire curiosity in my students like my teachers inspire curiosity in me. I plan to work for it and be successful and happy. Thank you.
Dr. Cruz Rivera, you have a future student right here, so I hope you are listening.
So great.
Congratulations. Boojacks. All right.
Awesome. Congratulations. Thank you, fellas.
Congratulations.
And thank you so much for coming up from Yuma. It's awesome. Okay, well, with that, Executive Director Ross, we'll now move on to item two. This is the time for the public to comment on items not on today's agenda or on the consent portion of the agenda. The total allotted for public comments at today's meeting is 90 minutes. We'll work to accommodate all speakers during this time. However, if time does not allow for all speakers, comments can be submitted via written comment. As a reminder, the board does not respond directly to the call to the public. And with that, Executive Director Ross, oh, one other point, sorry, more notes today. Additionally, speakers are not allowed to cede their time to another speaker, and personal attacks are not appropriate. As we have a large number of speakers registered today, all speakers will be limited to two minutes. And with that, Deputy Director DePlante, have we received any requests to speak?
President Haley, Superintendent Horn, members, yes, we have. First up is Stacy Brown, followed by Julie Batt, and then followed by Harmony Early. Stacy?
I remembered to press the unmute button this time. Always gets me. Good morning, board. As a former Handbook Committee member, I would like to articulate appreciation for the time the board has allowed for open discussion here at this meeting. I would also like to remind the ADE and the board the vision for the empowerment scholarship account. It was designed to empower parents to educate their children the way that their child needs. I'm sorry, I'm going to try not to cry because this program has been absolutely influential on my children, and I just could stand here forever and tell you guys about how much they've grown. I feel we've lost sight of this. And for the record, I just want to make sure that this board and the public fully understands where the limits were originated from. The department requested limits to be implemented by the Handbook Committee. It was made clear to the committee and the ADE, it made clear to the committee the ADE would not accept a handbook without limits. Even though limits were mostly agreed upon, my feeling and voice in those meetings were such that I was not in favor and placed in a position where I needed to concede to what the ADE was informing committee members. In addition, I'm unsure of what has been lost in translation in regards to risk-based auditing allowed by statute and implementing caps. These are not the same. Risk-based thresholds that trigger additional scrutiny and absolute caps on purchases are two completely different issues. Thank you, board members, for the continued support and opportunities to stand here and to speak for truth. To board members and public, please feel free to always reach out to me and to ask me questions. I will always speak the truth to this matter, no matter what repercussions are. Thank you.
President Haley, Superintendent Horn, members of the board. Next up is Julie Batt, followed by Harmony Early, followed by Tristan Haroldson. Julie?
My name is Julie Batt, and I'm an ESA parent of two. I'm here again, often virtually and in person, talking to, year after year, about the handbook again. And I'm sure you're all tired of hearing this by now, and I'm tired of coming back and talking about it a lot. So last month, Superintendent Horn said he wants to follow the law and will do what the legislators tell him. Last year, they told him in a letter, and this year, they told him in a meeting. And I'm here again, asking that the department follow the ESA laws, honor the current contracts that we signed under the current handbook, and to involve parents collaboratively throughout the handbook draft process along the way, not just at the end, not just at the beginning. My hope here today is that the board will act on its authority to reject the current draft and ask the department to deliver a handbook that complies with the law and to ask them to conduct themselves lawfully in regards to the present contracts. Otherwise, this could face legal challenges, wasting everybody's time and taxpayer dollars, and because it's because parents will continue to come before the board, continue to submit appeals, and continue to petition our legislators until this is lawfully solved. Thank you.
President Haley, Superintendent Horn, members of the board. Next up is Harmony Early, followed by Tristan Haroldson, Haroldson, followed by Megan Haroldson. Harmony?
Esteemed members of the board, Superintendent Horn, a group of ESA parents started a petition outlining our concerns about the administrative overreach of the leadership of the ESA program. In a couple of weeks, over 2,000 parents and supporters signed it. Today, I speak on behalf of these 2,000 parents and supporters and the thousands of kids that it represents. Over 2,000 of us ask you to vote no on adopting the proposed handbook. Over 2,000 parents and supporters ask you to stop the implementation of the proposed handbook, which has been done for over six weeks now, even though it has not been approved by this board, and it applies to next year's contracts, not the ones that we signed and are under right now. Over 2,000 of us ask you to reject, ask the ADE to reject and remove the harmful and restrictive spending caps on educational resources. In a letter to the board last year, 27 legislators clearly stated on the issue of price caps, and I quote, "The legislature has not set any restrictions on items utilized for educational purposes. With the proposed changes, additional constraints are added that overstep the boundaries of the laws passed by the legislature." If this board adopts the proposed handbooks with the limits on educational purchases, it will be overstepping the boundaries of the laws passed by the legislature. All 2,000 of us respectfully implore you not to overreach the authority of this board by approving a handbook that oversteps the boundaries of the law. Thank you.
Thank you.
President Haley, Superintendent Horn, members of the board. Next up is Tristan Haroldson, followed by Megan Haroldson, followed by Jeanette Aldana Perry. Tristan? No, Tristan. How about Megan?
Did I need to do something?
Oh, it's already.
Okay. Okay, sorry. Came in a little late. It was a lot of traffic. Good morning, Superintendent Horn, President Haley, and members of the board. My name is Megan Haroldson. I'm to seven children and an ESA family for five years. My oldest was here today. When we first started utilizing the program, there was a robust supplemental list and clear handbook guidelines. I study them intensely, and wanted to do the right thing and felt comfortable making good educational decisions for my children. Currently, those decisions are harder to make and keep track of. Not every family in Arizona has access to the Facebook groups, letting them know the newest restrictions being implemented, and I worry that there might be dire consequences, especially for some of my friends that do not know the clear things that are going on right now. It was over a year ago. I'm sorry. I research all the time for, oh, sorry. Okay. I research all the time for better lessons, learning techniques, and caring providers for my children for the unique opportunities. I'm here today to ask Mr. Horn to stop, sorry, to get to know educators, especially in this case, home educators. We are trying to do the impossible things. There was so much criticism from people that are supposed to be supporting us. I was so excited when you were elected, and then I heard you talking on the radio about parents in critical ways. We trusted you, that our characters flemish, and it is heartbreaking. We are choosing hard and exhausting ways to help our children to get you ready for unique careers. If you are truly concerned about what we are purchasing, talk to us. Sit down, learn the amazing things that home educators are doing with these supplemental items. So again, I'm here to ask for clear guidelines and respect for home educators and their knowledge of their children. Thank you.
President Haley, Superintendent Horn, members of the board. Next up is Jeanette Aldana Perry, followed by Carissa Valdez, followed by Angela Faber.
Good morning. My name is Jeanette Aldana Perry, and I'm from Costa Grande District 16. In the days leading up to the March 24th board meeting, three different versions of the ESA handbook were presented, with the final version presented, brought before this board on March 24th. On that day and ever since, Superintendent Horn, Mr. Ward, and the ADE have heard countless comments from ESA parents expressing our concerns about the handbook, and yet, no further versions have been shared with us despite ESA renewal contracts being sent out on May 1st. If the ADE truly intended to make additional changes to the handbook, those changes would have been made by now, as Michael Jackson once said, "All I want to say is they don't really care about us." Our only hope now lies with you, this esteemed board, to show that you do care about ESA families as much as you care about everyone else. Please help dispel the feeling that ESA families are second-class citizens. We too deserve a seat at the table. As outlined in today's agenda, item 5E, 2024 Enforcement Action Report, page four states, additional funding has enabled the board to expand the number of investigators responsible for handling educator misconduct cases. The ADE is dealing with a small handful of bad actors in the ESA program, just as the public school system does. Instead of punishing the entire ESA community with arbitrary spending caps based on Google searches, I respectfully ask this board to consider a more reasonable solution. Could the board instead direct the ADE to permanently implement a policy where purchases exceeding a certain threshold, say $2,000, require additional review and approval rather than imposing blinking caps on everyone? On a more personal note, homeschooling is already a niche community. Being a person of color who homeschools is even more so. It's disheartening to witness people being disingenuous toward fellow people of color within the homeschooling community. It feels like a betrayal of trust to those who support organizations like Black Mothers' Forum, reaching out to another culturally-specific group, the Hispanic Liberty Alliance, only to spread fear-mongering and gaslighting is even more infuriating. In my view, the homeschool community should strive to uplift and support one another. Resorting to scare tactics is the opposite of that. Thank you for your time, and may God bless you all.
President Haley, Superintendent Horn, members of the board. Next up is Carissa Valdez, followed by Angela Faber, followed by Adriana Moore. Carissa? No, Carissa, how about Angela? Followed by Adriana Moore, followed by Nicole Harple.
Good morning, members of the state board. I'm here as a parent who's tried again and again to help and find real solutions. Every month, families come here, we speak, we bring facts, we offer solutions, and here's what we hear in return. That's silence. That's what it feels like to be ignored, to watch laws broken and rules violated without action from the board. The Arizona Department of Education and the ESA program are not following the law. Without accountability, your silence is permission. When questions were raised about sped caps, the department responded that only medical documentation qualifies, but the law offers other forms that are being ignored, and they have implemented those already and are denying our sped students' associated goods at this day. The board is the authority. You are responsible to ensure lawful implementation of this program. Families are here today, ready to speak with any board members that are willing to listen. We want to engage with you so you know the right questions and the right facts to ask when you present and you ask these questions so that they will be honestly answered with proper lawful answers. We are in desperate, this is bad, and we are asking for help. Thank you.
President Haley, Superintendent Horn, members of the board. Next up is Adriana Moore, followed by Nicole Harple, followed by Kay Svidin. Adriana? No, Adriana, how about Nicole?
Good morning. Thank you for the opportunity to speak today, board members. I am an ESA parent of three from Yuma. I have come today to speak on issues within the ESA program with this current administration. I realize ESA is not on the agenda today and that there is an upcoming town hall, but the town hall is so near to the next meeting that it may not give parents adequate time to review the handbook and make their voices heard. I believe it is important that the board understands the struggles facing those using the program due to the current administration's handling of it. Its misappropriation of the statements within the handbook approved by department and final administrative decision are causing turmoil to a large majority of parents and students. They have taken liberty to use this in a way that is harmful to us and our students by causing random changes all throughout the year with unnecessary arbitrary denials on once-approved items, limitations on how much of an item can be purchased, capping the price points of item purchases, as well as disapproving items that may appear at first to not be educational, but which in actuality can be shown to be used for student-specific educational experience. Though it may seem that only a few are voicing concerns, I assure you, it is affecting the majority. Many, because of their situations, just cannot be here or virtually to voice their struggles. ESA is not a one-size-fits-all program. It was designed to be able to meet a student's educational needs outside of the traditional school setting. It has in years past worked well with very minimal abuse. Even the purported abuse by Horn is minuscule for a program of its size. Yet, the messaging continues that these administrative oversight regulations are to protect- Yet, the messaging continues that these administrative oversight regulations are to protect the program. This is just not true. It is damaging and only leads to more administrative regulation and abuse of power. I am asking the board to listen, please, to the voices of us parents and the letters that the legislator wrote that state that they don't intend to restrict educational purchases. Make sure that the handbook is only agreed upon after administrative overreach is addressed, the conflicts of interest are addressed, it removes all limitations as parents are already limited by the amount their student receives, and that it completely abides by law. Thank you.
President Haley, Superintendent Horn, members of the board. Next up is Kay Svidon, followed by Kathy Visser, followed by Heidi Will. Is there a Kay?
Okay, my name is Kathy Visser. As I've said before, when I've been down here, I'm one of the original ESA parents, and this is one of the original 75 students on the program. I brought him as a visual aid to see. You can see not one-size-fits-all on some of these, which relates to an issue we're having. Part of the reason we have the handbook rules is because the department was updating the handbook multiple times a year, not telling parents about it and not putting a version draft, you know, a version number on the handbook. So we literally would download the handbook every Monday, scan it for changes to know what the rules were. If parents weren't in our, I am one of the moderators on the largest Facebook support group for ESA. If parents weren't in our group, they didn't know about these changes. And then we would have to go back and advocate when they would implement these rules retroactively and say, "Look, on this date, the handbook said this." And we were able to effectively advocate for at least what the rules were on the date the handbook changed. Right now, what we have is a handbook that's not being followed. Rules change arbitrarily in the middle. And even the handbook draft, I currently have a reimbursement being denied. Over $1,000 cap that's not even listed in any of the handbooks. It's under PE equipment. We have an adaptive bike here that is currently being denied. I turned in the bike as associated goods. There are one of four documents required under the associated goods in the handbook draft. And one of them is a curriculum. I have a curriculum very specific to this bike and all the disabilities that Jordan has. He's given me permission to talk about those. His category is orthopedic self-contained. That should be enough to explain that we need an adaptive bike. It's being denied because I have not turned in a therapist's letter. His therapist is a speech therapist and will not write the letter because it's out of her scope of sequence.
Thank you so much.
President Haley, Superintendent Horn, members of the board. Next up is Heidi Will, followed by Jay Griffin, followed by Jordan Visser. Heidi?
Good morning, Board President Haley, members of the board, Superintendent Horn. In the beginning, parents and the government worked together to build the ESA program. But now we're divided by fear, suspicion, and distrust. How did we get here? And more importantly, where can we go from here? We all share the goal of helping children become thriving members of society, but communication has become a big problem. We only hear from the ESA department when expenses are denied, even though they align with statute, code, and the current handbook. The result is confusion, frustration, and fear. Low-income families and those with language barriers are disproportionately impacted. They don't have the money to pay interest while the department drags out the appeal process. They struggle to navigate the department's constantly-changing policies, making this an equal-access issue. This is why the Arizona Administrative Procedures Act prohibits government agencies from changing policies unilaterally that impact the public. Legislators are clear that these changes do not agree with the statutes that they wrote. Before I was a mom, I was a communications director, and it turns out that whether in a large organization or with just a few kids, good communication requires listening, responding, and taking appropriate action. The department is not responding, so it feels like they're not listening. That's why we're all here. Where else can we be heard? The courtroom? We don't want to go there, but that is the path we are on. I hope you will choose a different path. Please, move these changes to the legislative process. Update the current handbook to align with existing statute and code, and stop implementing changes before they become law. Don't forget, the law requires you to have an updated, accurate handbook. Let's work together again. Thank you.
President Haley, Superintendent Horn, members of the board. Next up is Jay Griffin, followed by Jordan Visser, followed by Eisen Embry. Jay?
Good morning, Madam President, members of the board. My name is Jay Griffin. My name is Jay Griffin, compliance advocate and public interest navigator for Arizona ESA families. This board has already received multiple sworn affidavits of concern documenting serious procedural breakdowns in the administration of the ESA program. Today, I announce that you will receive another affidavit formally entering into the record new evidence of constructive delay, suppression of public process, and coercive contract administration by the Department of Education under Superintendent Tom Horn and ESA Director John Ward. Specifically, this affidavit will include findings regarding premature enforcement of a draft handbook, coercive contract deadlines under unratified policy, suppression of public comment through manipulative process, removal of representative committee members like Stacey Brown, failure to hold board-directed town halls, denial of access to ESA funds based on unpublished thresholds, administrative messaging designed to pacify and not inform. And most recently, the May 16th announcement of a single town hall scheduled just 13 days before the board's vote in direct violation of your March directive for two town halls between March and April this year. This is not administrative oversight. It is administrative obstruction. Therefore, I am urging this board to take the following actions before the vote proceeds. Formerly censure Superintendent Horn and Director Ward for failure to comply with board directives. Convene an emergency meeting by May 31st to assess procedural integrity. Suspend all enforcement of handbook-related policies pending lawful board approval. And refer these patterns to the legislature for impeachment and removal proceedings where warranted. The ESA program belongs to Arizona families, not to unchecked bureaucrats.
Thank you so much for your comments, Mr. Griffin.
President Haley, Superintendent Horn, members of the board. Next up is Jordan Visser, followed by Eisen Embry, followed by Dominic Embry. Jordan?
Good morning, board. I'm Jordan Visser. This is my new bike because my old one kept on falling apart. And it gives me independence, other stuff like independence. And time being, I'm using it to gain my independence. Thank you very much.
President Haley, Superintendent Horn, members of the board. Next up is Eisen Embry, followed by Dominic Embry, followed by Lynn Fox Embry.
Good morning, members of the board. My name is Eisen Embry. I'm a 13-year-old student who uses the ESA program for school and just mainly school. First, I would like to thank you for supporting and helping students like me to get the stuff we use to learn. I am here today to share my concern about the $2,000 cap on tech, the $2,000 cap for every two years on certain technology purchases. I understand it's important to have oversight, but I don't think this rule reflects the real needs of all students. We don't all learn in the same way, and some tools help us, and other tools may not help other people. For me, that tool is a computer. I'm passionate about coding and programming, and I hope to build a future career in tech. But to keep learning and growing, I need a high-performance computer that can cost around $3,000 to $4,000. My mom receives around $7,000 a year through the ESA program because I am a foster adoptive student without any disabilities. With all the curriculum and school and tutoring, I don't have enough to buy that computer. So sorry. With the department already denying purchases from the new handbook, I was hoping that I could buy part of the stuff I need this year or next year and buy the rest in July, but the new $2,000 cap doesn't let me do that. I'm not asking for extra funds, just some flexibility. And I would like to thank you for letting me speak today.
President Haley, Superintendent Horn, members of the board. Next up is Dominic Embry, followed by Lynn Fox Embry, followed by James Inman.
Good morning, members of the board. My name is Dominic Embry, and I'm an eighth-grade student with several learned disabilities. I'm here today because I have concerns about the draft ESA handbook, especially this section about tools of vocational education on page 22. I'll be starting high school next year, and like many students, I'm thinking about what I want to do as a career. The handbook says students can use up to $1,500 every three years to buy vocational education. It also says that students with disabilities might be allowed to go over that limit, but only if they get a letter from a doctor. I want to explain why that can be hard for students like me. Getting a doctor's letter isn't always easy. Appointments take a long time. Doctors are often busy, and they might not understand the kinds of tools that we need to learn a trade or job skill. And that's what, and what if we change our minds about what we want to do? For example, I am interested in becoming a veterinary assistant. But if I buy the tools for that and later find out it's not the right fit, do I really have to wait three years to try something else? That doesn't seem fair. The cost of tools and uniform for a vet tech can be around, can be $580 to $1,824. Blacksmithing tools even more than that. In a culinary program, another thing I love can cost $1,395 and $1,805. Though, these are the real prices for real tools. Students with disabilities should be supported in exploring more than one path without long waiting times or extra barriers. We are still learning who we are. We're still figuring out what we're good at, and sometimes it takes more than one try. Thank you for listening. I hope you'll think about making the rules more flexible so students like me have a better chance to grow, explore, and succeed.
President Haley, Superintendent Horn, members of the board. Next up is Lynn Fox Embry, followed by James Inman, followed by Noah James Markham.
Good morning, President Haley, Superintendent Horn, members of the board. You just heard two of my three students that are on the ESA program. And I have to say, this was a big deal today. We have been studying the art of communication all year long, and they finished the year speaking to you, the board. I am so proud of both of my young men, and I think they did a great job. ESA is the reason why my kids are learning the confidence to stand up and speak for what they believe. They have heard me over the years talk about handbook this and this meeting and that meeting, and they wonder what we do at these meetings, and so today, here they are. Eisen spoke about the computer issue. You know, Eisen has less than $2,000 in his ESA account today. I had planned, before I saw the denials of the ESA handbook, that I could just save that until July and purchase what he needed in July because the money rolls over. But under the new handbook draft denials, even if I spend $2,000 today, or what he has left, $1,900, July, I can't buy the rest of the stuff he needs because it's every two years. So how is a student who wants to further his education going into eighth grade do that? You're tying his hands behind his back, and that really concerns me. While we're talking about this with Eisen because he has spent all this time researching all the parts he needs and all the stuff he wants to do, Dominic comes up to me and says, "Mom, but I want to maybe do this, this, or that." But now you're saying every three years? What does every three years mean to a child with disability? Now, I am very fortunate. My children see very wonderful doctors. But again, like Dominic said, are doctors really the ones that need to be writing these letters? You know, I have spoke to Mr. Ward after the last couple of meetings about why can't their special education teachers help with this? They write IEPs in the public school system, so why can't they do these letters? Well, Mr. Ward has refused to respond to that. Thank you so much for your time, and I look forward to seeing you next time.
President Haley, Superintendent Horn, members of the board. Next up is James Inman, followed by Noah James Markham, followed by Lexi Faber. James? I don't see James. How about Noah James Markham?
Here we go. Aloha, Ms. President. My name is Noah James Markham. And to the rest of the committee, aloha. You know, I support the ESA program. But I'd like to tell you about when I was in school, when the voucher was out. I never heard of it, and I had a disability, never got money. So people who are crying, what are you using your money for? Rent on your house? Or are you really using it on these in school? Please stop crying for the money. Make sure your money is used for school. And yes, I would love the voucher too. But what I'm going to talk about is Consent Agenda 3B because it's very important for people with special needs students that just want to be a part of learning at schools. And I thank you guys for continuing to talk about disabilities in the school system because it's very important. And I ask that we continue to talk about these issues for schools around Arizona. Mahalo, and thank you for your time.
President Haley, Superintendent Horn, members of the board. Next up is Lexi Faber, followed by Chris Wolfle, followed by Kim Reyes. Lexi? No, Lexi? Okay, how about Chris Wolfle?
Members of the board, Superintendent Horn, everyone. I'm bringing three concerns that I've consolidated to the board today, particularly about the handbook and about the ESA program. Arbitrary and capricious limits on the spending. You've heard that from a number of different speakers today. Technology is one area where I am particularly, particularly concerned about. My son is an extended contract student. He's a special needs student. He also has a number of medical issues that we struggle with every single day. And this program has really been a lifeline for him. And limiting his spending, he wants a job. He wants to be independent, and he wants a vocation. This is going to allow him to have a vocation. Our state needs vocational workers. My son is going to be one of those vocational workers, and I don't want this ripped away from him. This has given him hope. Excuse me for getting emotional. So I'm very concerned about that. We have a lot of need in this state for technology, and I want him to have a job, want him to be a taxpaying citizen. Number two, revisions to the handbook. I understand that revisions need to be made, okay? But revisions that happen and we don't know what's going on are extremely concerning. They're very, very stressful because we're trying to do what's right, okay? We're trying to follow the law. We're trying to follow the rules. When the rules change, we don't know what's going on, okay? And I'm stating these things very simply because it really got a little emotional. I didn't intend for that. Authentic and regular communication. Authentic and regular communication. Um, I plead for that from the Arizona Department of Education and the ESA program, Mr. Horn. We need authentic, meaningful communication and a feedback mechanism. Bottom line, we need to be heard. Thank you very much for your time.
President Haley, Superintendent Horn, members of the board. Um, next up is Kim Reyes, followed by Amanda Pappas, followed by Brandy Blackford. Doesn't look like Kim is on. It doesn't look like Amanda Pappas is on. How about Brandy Blackford, followed by Sierra Addington? Brandy, go ahead.
Uh, good morning. At the April meeting, this board, through President Haley, required the ADE to hold a town hall to hear parent feedback on the twenty-five, twenty-six ESA handbook. That town hall is now scheduled for June tenth. The SBE meeting to vote is on June twenty-third, and parents are expected to sign new contracts by June thirtieth. That leaves no realistic window for parent input to be reviewed or meaningfully implemented before the meeting and contracts are due. It feels like a placating move and not a request for real feedback. Even worse, families are reporting that funds are being withheld. Current contract funds are being withheld unless they sign future contracts. That are tied to the still unapproved and illegal handbook. That is coercive and deeply problematic. We are also seeing policies from the draft handbook being enforced prematurely. Parents, both Universal and Sped, are currently being denied educational resources. Based on arbitrary price caps and purchase limits that have no foundation in statute. This violates ARS fifteen twenty-four oh two B three, which gives parents broad discretion to use ESA funds for qualifying educational expenses. Without the limits now being imposed. Sped families are being told they must get letters from therapists to justify purchases. Not only is this an overreach, it violates Arizona licensing standards. Many therapists are unwilling or unable to write such letters because it's outside of their scope of practice. All of this is happening before the board. You have approved anything. It is an unlawful implementation of unapproved policy. And it puts this board, you, at risk of violating ARS forty-one ten oh three. Which prohibits agencies from enforcing rules without following proper rulemaking procedures. This is not transparency. It is not lawful government. And it is certainly not a parental partnership. We're asking you to act now. Thank you.
President Haley, Superintendent Horn, members of the board. First, if I can remind you online, please leave your cameras on off. Until called and muted before and after speaking, please. So next up is Sierra Addington, followed by Oksana Smith, followed by Bianca Martinez. Sierra?
Good morning. Good morning, members of the board. My name is Sierra Addington. And I speak to you again today as an advocate for the ESA program and a strong advocate for all Arizona children. Our public schools are failing, not only in education, but in protecting our children. Over two hundred and forty Arizona children are missing today. Two stories I want to mention are Jarrett Brooks and Emily Pike. Jarrett was a sixteen-year-old homeschooled student that asked for help from Joseph City School District and was turned away. He disappeared on July four, twenty twenty-three, and hasn't been seen since. Emily, fourteen years old, went missing from her Mesa group home and was later found murdered and dismembered. One of the most horrifying cases in our state. Last month, we heard about dozens of students sexually abused in our public schools. It's no surprise families are turning to ESA. Many parents no longer trust public schools to keep their children safe. ESA offers options, safer schools or learning at home where children are supported and protected. While we appreciate the ESA program and all it provides us, ESA families continue to face unlawful overreach. ESA parents, no Horn and Ward, met with legislators behind closed doors on April thirtieth. And were told to stop enforcement of the unapproved handbook. Parents are still receiving denials for items clearly allowed under the current handbook. These denials cite the unapproved twenty-five, twenty-six handbook rules and are often contradictory and confusing. These failures must stop. Please tell Superintendent Horn to end these unlawful denials, to follow the current ESA handbook, and please restore trust in our education systems. Thank you.
President Haley, Superintendent Horn, members of the board. Next up is Oksana Smith, followed by Bianca Martinez, followed by Diane Weaver. Oksana?
Hello?
We can hear you.
Yeah, okay, great. Thank you. I'm ready to speak. Thank you. Hello, my name is Oksana Smith. I'm an immigrant from Ukraine. I'm a proud American and ESA parent of a Universal student who will start first grade. I'm here to tell you to reject this new parent handbook. ESA is a very unique program that lets parents to customize their kids' educations, passions, and needs. New limits will take that away. I honestly don't know what the future holds for my boy. But five hundred dollar limit is no good. If he would want to pursue music, the limit for musical instrument is four thousand dollars. How's that fair? You know, in online, you know, homeschool community, there's parents that from different states share that there is. Limits and requirements of different programs that they have, and that's okay. But we don't live in California, Florida. We live in the free state of Arizona. Did you know that in California, you can't buy religious curriculum using homeschooling funds? What happened to the freedom of religious? What happened to the in God we trust nation? Don't, please don't turn Arizona into California. We already have limits and it's our yearly funds. Well, preparing for this meeting, you know, digging a little bit deeper. I found out that you already have been instructed by legislators to drop these limits. And it's illegal against the statutes. I believe that if you follow this through, your careers will have a permanent blemish on this. You face a lawsuit and not being reelected. Please don't forget that the government works for the people, not the way around. We, the people, our founding fathers, would be ashamed of you for this. No to this new parental. Thank you.
President Haley, Superintendent Horn, members of the board. It looks like Bianca is not online, so we'll go next with Diane Weaver, followed by Roberta Patterson, followed by Simone Bell. Diane?
Thank you. It is reasonable to expect parents to engage in the political process. It is not reasonable that I have to miss my child's educational appointments in order to be here. To advocate against arbitrary limitations which are unlawful and have no basis in documented need. The ESA program has less waste, fraud, and abuse than most government programs. Last year, twenty-seven legislators sent a letter urging this board not to pass a handbook full of overreach. This year, legislators held a meeting with the department to say, stop, what you're doing again is not in the law. The draft handbook is being implemented today with zero respect for this board's authority to vote on it or for the thousands of executed contracts. While some argue about how to arbitrarily limit the ESA program, the future is not waiting. Almost everything taught in schools today will be automated. Even public school advocates like Ezra Klein at the New York Times acknowledged that the current education system resembles a conveyor belt. And notes that it lacks the ability to respond as quickly as the world is changing. ESA families have the ability to respond and empower their children. In this way, Arizona is a global leader in responding to our rapidly evolving world. Instead, let's collaborate on expanding unique industrious and tailored learning opportunities. Instead of trying to stifle the extraordinary learning being done by ESA recipients. Please call a vote today to reject the handbook. The board would be following the law and honoring the wishes of the two thousand ESA parents and supporters who signed the recent petition. Thank you.
President Haley, Superintendent Horn, members of the board. Next up is Roberta Patterson, followed by Simone Bell, followed by Rebecca Thomas. Roberta?
Thank you. Good morning, President Haley, Superintendent Horn, and members of the board. I have been the parent of the ESA recipient since twenty twenty. It has been immensely helpful in providing my students with quality education and educational therapies. At the heart of ESA is a program designed to meet the unique educational needs of Sped students. So that students like mine can receive enriching education to help them achieve their academic goals. Unfortunately, the current ESA administration has made unlawful changes to several allowable items. Including what is allowed in Arizona revised statute, section fifteen, subsection twenty-four oh two, paragraph four, subparagraph P, item I. In this statute, there are no spending limits placed on technological devices. In the proposed handbook, the current ESA administration has provided insulting extra step for Sped students to provide a letter from a qualified examiner. This extra step is insulting as it puts an unnecessary burden on Sped families. So while this may seem like an altruistic gesture, quite frankly, it is a slap in the face. The limits should not be imposed at all. It is my understanding that the limits placed on items in the unapproved proposed handbook have already been unlawfully implemented. In addition to this, the ESA administration has also broken the following ESA rule, R seven dash two dash fifteen oh seven C. The department shall not request repayment for an expense that is approved for a specific ESA. The department shall treat similar expenditures by similarly situated account holders in the same manner. In the current school year, there have been account holders who have been denied an item that has been approved for others. We have this rule broken several times in previous ESA administration as well. I ask that the board step in and address these issues. Please do not approve the proposed handbook as it is. And more importantly, please take all of the parent feedback you are hearing repeatedly into consideration. Thank you.
President Haley, Superintendent Horn, members of the board. Next up is Simone Bell, followed by Rebecca Thomas, followed by Denita Jackson. Simone?
Can you hear me?
Yes, you can. Go ahead.
Honorable board members, I stand before you again today to voice my strong opposition to the proposed twenty twenty-five, twenty twenty-six ESA current handbook. This draft requires significant revision to comply with Arizona law. The category-specific spending caps in this handbook directly contradict both the letter and spirit of our ESA law. These arbitrary limitations prevent families from allocating funds based on their children's unique educational needs. Since we sign yearly contracts with the ESA program, we should only face yearly total spending caps, not restrictive categories. These restrictions particularly harm special education students like my son with ADHD and autism. Who thrives with diverse learning opportunities. Technology restrictions impede students studying coding and digital arts. The vocational trading budget prevents participation in consecutive programs. My son hopes to take welding in eleventh grade and blacksmithing in twelfth grade, which you now make impossible. With rising inflation, these restrictions become increasingly burdensome each year. The Arizona Department of Education is overstepping its authority. On March fifth, twenty twenty-four, our state legislator clearly stated they have not permitted these restrictions. These provisions violate ARS fifteen twenty-four OCD regarding rulemaking requirements. The Arizona Administrative Procedure Act disports own rulemaking authority on the ARS fifteen two oh C B three. I respectfully urge the board to take four critical actions. First, suspend adoption of this handbook until it complies with Arizona law. Second, halt ongoing maladministration by the ESA department and investigate unlawful enforcement actions. Third, appoint an independent ESA administration compliance commissioner to audit that development process. Fourth, reinstate meaningful parent oversight through the ESA parent oversight committee with open meetings and parent maturity presentation. Thank you for your consideration.
President Haley, Superintendent Horn, members of the board, members of the board, sorry. Denita Jackson is next, followed by Julie Stewart. Um, followed by Cindy Menen Hall. Denita?
Good morning, Board President Haley. Can you guys hear me?
Yeah, go ahead.
Okay, thank you. Um, Board President Haley, Board Member, Superintendent Horn and staff, my name is Denita Jackson. I have a master's degree in applied behavior analysis with a graduate certificate and gifted education. I homeschool my child who is undiagnosed twice exceptional, which the proposed coverage limits would apply. And I approve of the handbook, and I'm also asking you to approve of the handbook as well for these reasons. Please understand that the ESA program was designed to be a supplemental program. To the public school education, that the ESA program families only receive ninety percent of the dollars that they would. If they went to a public school. Now, those of us who have chose to go to and utilize the ESA program, we are very grateful. But it is not intended to cover all of the expenses. And also, the reimbursements, they can be, um, parents can call and ask for preapproval first. Will this item be approved before submitting it? Therefore, they don't have to worry so much about is it going to be rejected? Um, I am also on the parent handbook committee. And we unanimously, former and all current members of the parent handbook committee. Voted unanimously to approve the two thousand dollar temporary stopgap. I'm asking that you approve the handbook because if unfortunately, we have to revert back to the current handbook. The four to five month delay that the handbook committee has helped to eliminate for families. All families, even those who disapprove, um, disapprove or who oppose the handbook, will have to go back to waiting four to five months for reimbursement. Also, if anyone on the board needs transcripts or emails verifying that all of the committee members voted unanimously on. Uh, to approve these things, I can provide those to you. So, um, we are all in, we want to support all Arizona families. Thank you.
President Haley, Superintendent Horn, members of the board. Next, uh, so it looks like Julie Stewart's not online. Next up is Cindy Menen Hall, then Rebecca Thomas joined. So we'll go to her after Cindy. And then, um, probably Casey Cannon will be next. She's next online. So Cindy Menen Hall, you're next, followed by Rebecca.
I'm not sure if you can see me or hear me. I'm having some issues.
We can hear you.
Okay. Um, I first want to say that I greatly appreciate that there was a handbook committee and that they were there. But I also am curious, who was represented? How were we knowing that all areas were covered for all the people that are in ESA? Um, I am deeply concerned about having to sign my contract. Be as being a former project engineer, I know how critical it is to ensure that you have the right contract. Because right now, the way it stands, many people are signing it because they're terrified that they're going to lose their contract and have to reapply and then be denied. I am also one of those, but I'm, I'm holding out because I'm hopeful with the school board being on board and helping us review it. I know that this could be a delay, um, if we pause on this current handbook coming in. But I think it's something to take into consideration that budgets are put in place. We get our yearly amount. Fraud has been down. We have been doing all of the things. I am very meticulous when it comes to ensuring that my children have what they need. Um, it's been very difficult finding an actual public school. There's even public schools we've gone for our son. And there's a waitlist, a huge waitlist for kindergartners and first grades. So we have reverted back to teaching at home and finding all the things that we can do. And I am grateful, so grateful that ESA is there. There is a huge community that we're all helping each other and we're working as a team. I hate to see such a rift, but I know that education is so important. And if any of you have children of your own, you know how important it is for these kids to go out and thrive because they are the future generation. My son is six years old and he has determined that he wants to fly a pilot, be a pilot. He wants to fly either a helicopter or plane. He says, where can I go with that, Mom? Can I do military? Can I do hospitals? He's six years old. Um, I mean, their future is just endless. And hearing the kids today speak says so much about the ESA program. I just hope that we can all come to an agreement and look at the fact that a budget sticks within a calendar year, not expanding out one year. Thank you so much for your time and thank you so much for taking consideration of all of our thoughts.
President Haley, Superintendent Horn, members of the board. Next up is Rebecca Thomas, followed by Crystal Smith, who joined us, and then Casey Cannon.
Hear me?
Rebecca, you're up. Yep.
Today, I wanted to address what feels like a growing dictatorship within the ADE regarding the ESA program. Behind closed doors, deals were made and priorities quietly shifted. Since then, the pretense that you care about ESA families, especially homeschooling parents, have vanished. You allow us to speak at these meetings because you're legally obligated to, not because you're interested in listening. Your actions clearly show a bias against parents of disabled children and those who choose not to funnel ESA funds into private schools. Communications with families have gone silent while discriminatory rule changes, restrictions, and arbitrary denials continue unchecked. Meanwhile, the superintendent paints parents as criminals in the media by highlighting already denied purchases. With no money lost, recycling the same examples to justify harmful changes to the handbook. There is no transparency, only selective enforcement and quiet implementation of decisions made without public input. To you, we're nothing more than background noise. The agreements you've made remain hidden and your ESA staff are left to carry out those decisions without explanation or accountability. What loophole allows you to alter rules and restrictions at will? You owe the public clear answers, not vague automated responses. This proposed handbook is meaningless if it can be disregarded the moment someone decides to change it on a whim. It's time to be honest with parents and uphold the trust this program was built on. Thank you.
President Haley, Superintendent Horn, members of the board. Next up is Crystal Smith, followed by Casey Cannon. Next up is Crystal Smith, followed by Casey Cannon, followed by Kirsten Galando. Crystal?
It looks like Crystal Smith logged off.
Okay, Casey Cannon? No, Casey? Okay, she's coming in. Casey will be followed by Kirsten Galando, followed by Crystal McKinley. Casey, you're up. Go ahead.
I'm sorry. The recently, good morning, members of the board. The recently implemented spending caps and time limitations are not only unnecessary, they're harmful. These restrictions severely limit our ability to meet our children's unique educational needs and violate statutes that protect educational choice and access. Second, while I appreciate accommodations for sped students, limiting exceptions on caps and limits to only those with official diagnoses is discriminatory. There are countless universal students like my own child who exhibit serious behavioral and sensory challenges, but face long wait times for diagnoses. In the past two years, my child has broken numerous educational items, including a computer, less than two years old, a desk, multiple chairs, and numerous heads and numerous headsets due to impulsivity and a lack of spatial awareness. If I couldn't replace those items because of time limits, my son would quickly fall behind and be put at a great and unnecessary disadvantage. Finally, requiring curriculum justification for basics like pencils and paper is absurd. These policies appear designed to discourage ESA use altogether and push families back into public schools that frankly are no longer equipped to meet the growing behavioral and emotional needs of students. Homeschooling and private education are not fringe options, and they're not a supplemental program. They're lifelines. I encourage this board to stand with parents and children, reject this current handbook, reform the committee to include real voices, remove these burdensome, harmful policies, and update parents with actual steps that are being taken to resolve these issues. Thank you.
President Haley, Superintendent Horn, members of the board. Next up is Kirsten Galando, followed by Crystal McKinley, followed by Valia Aguirre. Kirsten?
Good morning, President Haley, Superintendent Horn, and members of the board. I spoke last month to voice my concerns about harmful policies that are in the current parent handbook draft that discriminate against special education and universal homeschool students. Those concerns have been mentioned today. I'm not going to repeat them, but what I want to say today is that we parents want to partner with the department to create a handbook that both complies with statute and works for everyone in the program and for the department as well. The extremely low incidence of fraud and abuse found in this program shows that we parents are serious about following the law and using funds appropriately. We have shown that we are trustworthy. However, we have little reason to trust the department. We have experienced ongoing lack of response to all the concerns that we raise. There is a lack of follow-through by the department on the board's directive to hold town halls and as well as the legislature's directives to the department to remove policies that don't align with statute. We have had a lack of response to our concerns about the conflict of interests, concerns with the handbook draft creation process. We also have been asked to relinquish our right to speak when we do disagree. We've also seen that a member of the parent committee that openly voiced concerns about the handbook creation process was removed from that committee. And we see right now, today, illegal implementation of contract changes being applied without following the rulemaking process or procedure. We need this trust to be built with the department. We need the department to show us that they understand that they also have an end of the deal to keep up with us and that we can work together, and we are ready, we're willing, we want to.
President Haley, Superintendent Horn, members of the board. Next up is Crystal McKinley, followed by Valia Aguirre, followed by, next person online is Rosemary McAtee. Crystal?
Good morning. I've been speaking at each public hearing since I received a denial by ADE in October of twenty twenty four for spending caps that are not in my contract. And I feel like my words have been falling on deaf ears over and over. So I'm here once again pleading with you to listen and to do what is right to empower our children through education. A public hearing is supposed to be a critical step in the decision-making process, ensuring that the public input is valued and that decisions are made with a full understanding of the diverse perspectives within the community. That's the difference between democracy and dictatorship. So I'm pleading with you, please listen to us. Do not approve spending limits of any amount in the proposed ESA handbook. Spending limits that they are the antithesis of empowerment. It says to one child that because, as Janelle Wood stated, here is the average of other kids, so you too must be average. It says you may find, you may not find your passion and excel in it. Instead, you must be average. Is this really the message that SPE and ADE have for Arizona's youth? Is it really what you think is best for Arizona's children? You yourselves honor above-average students at the beginning of every one of these meetings. Do you think that you would be told, if you were told that you were, could only be average, that you would be sitting in the seats that you're sitting in now? So our request is simple. Do what's best for our children, not bureaucracy. Stand for our children and empower them. Vote no to any handbook that presents spending limits. And on a personal note, I want to share my experience. Despite what Danita Jackson just stated to you, we do not have the ability to get preapproval, and I can prove it. Before making a significant purchase for my children, they spent a year proving they had the dedication and discipline for that purchase to be a proper use of their educational funds. And I tried to get preapproval. I called first, and the agent told me there were no directives. And I sent an email and got no response, and I'd be happy to provide.
Thank you so much, Ms. McKinley.
Thank you.
President Haley, Superintendent Horn, members of the board. Next up is Valia Aguirre, followed by Rosemary McAtee, followed by Dina Burnside. Valia, sorry?
Good afternoon, good morning. My name is Valia, and I'm a parent of three special needs children who depend on Arizona's ESA program. ESA allows us to provide therapies, adaptive equipment, and curriculum that meet their, our children's complex needs, something that the public school system cannot offer them. I urge the board to follow the law and honor existing contracts in the handbook and to collaborate with parents, not shut us out with the, as they have been doing these last couple of months. When the state imposes arbitrary spending caps, it restricts and prohibits access to necessary educational and therapeutic realities for children that are, have diverse learning needs. It also results in the creation of unnecessary barriers to our most vulnerable populations, children with disabilities, and the parents of educating special needs children. For example, capping gym equipment may seem minor, but for a child who needs a therapeutic treadmill, adaptive bike, or swing for motor planning or regulation, it's just not optional. It's essential. Right now, we need partnership with the board more than anything else. So I just ask that you work with us because our children's futures are at stake. Thank you.
President Haley, Superintendent Horn, members of the board. Next up is Rosemary McAtee, followed by Dina Burnside, followed by, looks like next online is Savannah Rogers. So Rosemary, you're up? Rosemary, you're muted?
Good morning, President Haley and members of the board. Thank you for taking the time to listen to parents in the ESA program. I have been a member of this program since two thousand and nineteen, and I have never felt so left out by the ESA department as I have this year and last year. You, in fact, are offering us more consideration than the ADE is offering. They have not listened to parents or even to you, President Haley. This last week, they finally threw out a token town hall on the schedule. While you have taken time to listen to parents for hours, the ADE is only begrudgingly offering us one point five hours on June tenth, which is clearly an inadequate amount of time, as you have listened to us for probably six-plus hours at this point. Yet again, I want to highlight that this handbook is not in accord with the law or the legislative intent. It is unacceptable that policies are being put into place in footnotes. The caps placed on items is not a deal breaker for me, but footnote twenty-two on page fifty-two is. The department may ask for repayment of any items approved in air if items are improper or unallowable under your ESA contract, straight law, administrative rule, program, policies, or this ESA program. Before this year, every single purchase had to be approved, thus protecting tax dollars from being used improperly. This footnote gives the department impunity and their inability to work, and makes parents responsible for the department's inefficiency. Please protect parents from this abuse. Tell the ESA department to get their job done efficiently and reject this handbook. Thank you.
President Haley, Superintendent, members of the board. Next up is Dina Burnside, followed by Savannah Rogers, followed by Sharice Gunter. Dina?
Yes, thank you. Dear President Haley, Board Members, Superintendent Horn and staff. My name is Dina Burnside. I am from Tucson, and I am one of the parents who worked on the ESA parent handbook. We all acted in good faith to produce a parent handbook that is transparent and solves the problems of four- to five-month delays in paying vendors and reimbursing families. After listening to all of the comments, I believe there has been a misunderstanding about the coverage amounts on supplementary materials. There are no caps for special needs students. Special needs families need to submit their claims under vocational and other categories rather than supplemental materials. I believe this is an education issue on both part of the parent, of the families and the reviewers, and is not a part, a problem with the handbook itself. The coverage amounts listed on a few supplementary, supplementary materials in the handbook are to improve the transparency and efficiency so that all requests under those amounts can be approved quickly without additional IEP, therapists, or other professional documentation for special need students. It speeds up the process so reviewers can quickly review the invoices and receipts and process within weeks rather than four to five months. There are currently eighty-eight thousand students on the ESA program and is expected to grow to over a hundred thousand students soon, with no additional funding or employees to handle the volume. The department has fifteen people who review approximately ninety thousand requests a month, many with multiple invoices per request. At the end of the year, a decision was made to allow purchases of up to two thousand dollars to be paid immediately and to do risk-based auditing until the huge backlog was cleared. Payments have been reaching vendors and families within one to two weeks rather than four to five months. This will be in place until no longer needed, and hopefully, the new handbook is approved, which will allow requests to be processed in a timely manner. Thank you.
President Haley, Superintendent Horn, members of the board. Next up is Savannah Rogers, followed by Sharice Gunter, followed by Ruth Yanez. Savannah?
Hello, can you hear me?
Yes, we can.
Okay, good morning, members of the board. My name is Savannah Rogers. I have three kids on a disability contract on ESA. I know the handbook is not on the agenda today, but I would like to keep it in the forefront of your mind because in just one month, you will have to vote on our ESA handbook, one that has been highly contested. And ESA would want you to believe that you don't have a choice, that your vote is a formality, but the law that created the procedural rules and placed you in charge is not a formality. You do hold the power to hold this agency accountable to those rules, and what we have seen so far is no meaningful interaction with parents or families from the department. We haven't seen meaningful actions for this entire tenure. The parent advisory committee is no longer advises. Last year, they were strictly information-only. The handbook committee was selected in secret, and the town halls, rare that they happen, are virtual, so parents can remain muted the entire time. This is lip service. It checks a box, but not an agency acting like it cares or exists to serve students. If we really care about students, we would not pass this handbook. We wouldn't continually change the rules to make the program unstable and unusable. We wouldn't set families and students up to fail, would we? ESA does not know our kids, and they don't seem to want to. They don't communicate with us, and they don't respond when we try to communicate with them. I think that is something I miss the most, and what's missing from the leadership is someone actually caring. At the end of the day, it's not about numbers and caps. It's not about parents or forty fraudulent purchases. We're asking the wrong questions and focusing on the wrong things. It should be, what does our child, what does this child, what does each child need to succeed, and how can we accomplish that? Those are the questions we should be asking, and when we look at it from that lens, the suggested changes in the handbook make no sense. And you know that, your parents, your educators. We want to be good stewards, and we want to help our children succeed using this program, and that should be something that we all want. Thank you.
President Haley, Superintendent Horn, members of the board. Next up is Sharice Gunter, followed by Ruth Yanez, followed by Janine Bode. Sharice? You're muted?
Okay. I'm a parent of five ESA students, including children with disabilities. I'm here because the ADE is enforcing a two thousand twenty-five to two thousand twenty-six ESA handbook that this board has not approved. Families are being denied educational purchases under unlawful rules despite signing contracts based on current law. This isn't just confusing, it's dangerous. That handbook should be on today's agenda. President Haley, you've championed opportunity nationwide. Please lead now and bring this issue forward. Vice President Hagerman, you know rigid caps don't reflect classroom reality. Please stand for flexibility. Superintendent Horn, fraud is already banned. These caps don't fight misuse, they block legitimate learning. Mr. Caponesi, you've seen how the right tool changes a student's life. These caps take those tools away. Dr. Clay, rural and underserved families need more access, not more restrictions. You can protect that. Dr. Core, your work prepares students for the workforce, but they can't train without proper tools. Dr. Hightower, equity demands we listen to real families, not just enforce unchecked policy. Ms. Meyerson, you've built schools on belief in every child. Please defend families doing the same. Ms. Phillips-Kravikis, as a disability advocate, you know assistive tech isn't optional. It's essential. Dr. Cruz Rivera, these restrictions cut off pathways before students even reach your classrooms. Dr. Vipk, your legacy is rooted in integrity and process. Please help restore both here. Each of you has the power to protect due process, restore clarity, and ensure ESA continues to serve, not hinder students. Please stop tapping these students' futures and start honoring the promise of choice. Thank you.
President Haley, Superintendent Horn, members of the board. Next up is Ruth Yanez, followed by Janine Bode. Ruth?
Hello, can you hear me?
Go ahead.
Good morning, members of the board. My name is Ruth Yanez. I'm a concerned mother of a child who was assaulted on February twenty-seven, twenty-five this year at Casa Grande Middle School. She reported this to them because she was bullying her. The school didn't report or investigate the assault. Instead, they expelled my daughter and allowed the aggressor back in the school. I investigated the incident on my own, and I found a video, which one I took to the police department, and I was able to press charges against the aggressor. The school district of Casa Grande not only wrongly accused my daughter and expelled her, they also accused her of carrying and using a firearm at school. I demanded the evidence of such a severe accusation for weeks, after insistently demanding. I received an email from the superintendent assistant, Mr. Quinones. He says the severe accusation against my daughter of using a firearm at school has been a clerical error from the district administration. I presented police report and the court documents to prove to my daughter's innocence to the superintendent, Dr. Lekey. I also provide him the email that says that the severe accusation was a clerical error. I request the superintendent, Dr. Lekey, justice, justice for my daughter, who has been assaulted, expelled, and wrongly accused and convicted, and she has lost her, her, her school year due to the negligence of the school district of Casa Grande. Dr. Lekey, Dr. Lekey have refused to do anything about my daughter case. She has lost his, her school year. Thank you.
President Haley, Superintendent Horn, members of the board. Finally, Janine Bode.
Good morning, President Haley, Superintendent Horn, members of the board. I'm speaking today because something deeply troubling is happening in the ESA program, something that would never be acceptable if it were happening to you. Board members, imagine being promised reimbursement for your business and travel expenses only to be told at the last minute that you're not getting it because of an internal policy update that no one voted for, no one approved, and no one will even put in writing. When you ask for an explanation, you're met with silence. That is similar to what ESA families are dealing with right now. I recently contacted the ESA Help Desk to confirm whether I could use funds to purchase a computer for my child. I was told that a two thousand dollar spending cap, mentioned only in a draft handbook, was already in effect. When I asked how an unapproved policy could be enforced, the response was simply, things update. That's not just vague, it's unlawful. To make matters worse, I followed up in writing and have received no response, no timeline, no justification, nothing. This is not a clerical error. This is a serious breach of trust and process. Families are being denied access to educational tools based on rules that have not gone through any formal or legal any formal or legal review. We're being asked to sign new contracts without even seeing the final handbook we're agreeing to. That's not transparency, that's coercion. If this board were told to operate under unpublished policies to sign contracts blind or to accept financial decisions without accountability, you would never stand for it. So why should we? We are not asking for special treatment. We are asking for legal compliance, clarity, and fairness. This is urgent and it demands immediate oversight and correction. Thank you for attention and your action. And by the way, if you allowed Janelle Wood to have the last word again, it just shows your abuse of power.
President Haley, Superintendent Horn, members of the board. That concludes this call to public.
Okay. Moving on to the consent agenda, we'll now move to item three. Is there an item or items from the consent agenda that a board member would like to pull and discuss?
Yes, Madam President, I'd like to pull F, please.
Okay, we'll move item three F. All right, so with that, I would like to, in a single motion, vote on items three A through three C, three E, and three G. Do I have a motion? All right, member Hightower, do I have a second?
Second.
Member Webke, Dr. Webke makes a second. All in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? All right, so item three F.
Oh, thank you, Madam Chairman. I just wanted to use this opportunity to talk about the CEAP. I know we had a presentation about the Special Education Advisory Panel about a year ago, but there have been so many issues that we dealt with. One, of course, in the huge subcommittee that we had, the premature graduation issue that has come up numerous times. And I would love to somehow figure out how we can get the Special Education Advisory Panel that is supposed to advise us involved in these conversations. I know we're having a briefing, I think in one or two months, on the implementation of all of the recommendations we made in that subcommittee, and they were numerous, admittedly, but I feel like the CEAP is a really underutilized tool and forum that we have. It's federally mandated, it's got widespread representation. I was a member on it. You've got members of schools, universities, everything. I think they're a really great forum to start dealing with some of these issues and then tease up their recommendations to us.
Any other comments on item three F? Do we have a motion to advance item three F?
So moved.
Thank you. Do I have a second?
Second.
I'll go with Dr. Clay. So all in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Aye. Any opposed? And thank you for your comments, Member Kravikis. We really appreciate it. All right, we will now go to call to the public. We'll now move to item four, which is a call to the public. This is time for the public to comment on items on today's general session. As a reminder, the board does not respond directly to the call to public. We have a large number of speakers registered today, so overall, we will be limiting speakers to two minutes. Deputy Director DePlante, have we received any requests to speak?
President Haley, Superintendent Horn, members of the board. We have. First up is Bridget Vega, followed by Lynn Lang, followed by Harry Gerwalt. Bridget?
Good morning, members of the board. A year ago, I started attending these meetings and following what's happening in our state. I helped pass a few laws this spring based on my experience with advocacy in child sex trafficking. As I continue my mission to find champions for kids, I urge you to listen closely to those who speak here. Today, I ask that you examine the integrity, transparency, and responsibility you owe to the children of this state. Recent decisions or lack of give me great purpose, a great pause as to if you really understand what our kids are saying. I can't possibly explain to you the chaos that's going on in our schools, but your educator discipline report does it well. I implore you to dig close into that data. Partner with other departments and protect our children, not yourselves. There's simply no other way to say it, to do your jobs. Extreme accountability, integrity, and transparency and policy implementation enforcement is a must in all of your positions. Our children do deserve it, and I'm here to respectfully, graciously request it from all of you. Protecting our children is a non-negotiable. It is your duty. Thank you.
President Haley, Superintendent Horn, members of the board. Next up is Lynn Lang, followed by Harry Gerwalt. Lynn? Looks like no Lynn and Harry has not got online, so that concludes this call to the public.
Okay. We are now going to move to the consent agenda, or the general session. So with that, Executive Director Ross, I believe you have item five A.
President Haley, Superintendent Horn, members of the board. Very excited for this item and actually very excited to have Shannon Etts, our project coordinator, introduce it. Just so you all know, and for the public, Shannon coordinates everything for the state, State Board Student of the Month, for Student Advisory Panel. She does amazing work infusing student voice into the board, and so I'm happy to have her introduce this item. Shannon?
Thank you so much. President Haley, Superintendent Horn, members of the board. I'm really excited to get introduced to you, one of our Student Advisory Panel members. Today, we have with us Sophia Lynn. She's been on our panel for two years. She currently serves as our vice chair. Unfortunately, she is graduating. I've told her that she is welcome to graduate high school. She does not get to graduate the Student Advisory Panel, though. I've already told her she has to mentor next year's kids. She's wonderful and going on to really fantastic things. So I'm really excited that she's going to come share. The panel has been really interested in dual enrollment this year, so that she's here to present on that. They had a wonderful conversation with Dr. Core that was super inspiring for all of them, so I will turn it over to Sophia.
Hello, everyone. Thank you so much for allowing me to speak. I was supposed to come with two of my peers, but they actually both got sick. So unfortunately, you're stuck with me. Um, okay, so like Ms. Etts mentioned today, we'll be talking a little bit about dual enrollment. So yeah. Okay. Before we get into dual enrollment, I wanted to talk a little bit about our specific experience on the panel because as someone who has been able to serve for the past two years, it really has been an incredible and insightful opportunity. And because last year was the first year of the panel actually existing, I just wanted to emphasize our gratitude that something like this exists where student voices are able to be amplified at somewhat of a legislative level. And I think just overall, being able to connect with nine other peers on this panel, all of which come from different backgrounds, different parts of Arizona, public, private, charter schools, and also being able to talk to members of the board and other administrators or legislators among the board has been really amazing and incredible. And then getting into a little bit about dual enrollment specifically, when we were initially thinking about what we wanted to bring to the board, we wanted to highlight a lot of the opinions and the experiences of students who actually have or don't have dual enrollment in their schools and what they thought of those specifically. So I'll walk through a couple of my peers' experiences. So Bruce goes to a public school and he was talking about how a lot of his friends have taken dual enrollment classes. And because of this ability, they've been able to earn an associate's degree simultaneously, and that has been super helpful. So while he wasn't able to take dual enrollment, he thought overall it was a generally positive feedback from his peers. And then Nate also goes to a public high school and he had taken dual enrollment class for honor Spanish. And he said that the process was fairly easy. He just had to register for the class, pay the fee, and was able to attain college credit if he passed. And because of that, he was able to get six college credits from taking the class. He had a concern specifically about the barriers to entry in regards to the price because the tuition ended up being six hundred dollars. And although he was still able to take the class, he fears that that may be a concern for other students. And then Nicole was able to also take dual enrollment courses and she was able to do both advanced placement classes and dual enrollment, which has been very beneficial because of its academic rigor. And then a little bit more, Max was able to talk a little bit about how dual enrollment was super helpful and he actually got thirty-plus credit hours that will be able to be used in college. So that's really, really great. And then Autumn, I thought, was a unique perspective because she's actually homeschooled. So in regards to dual enrollment, she was able to do the curriculum that was already given to her through her homeschool program and then also be able to do dual enrollment. And I was interested in hearing a little bit about how she thought that that helped her, and it was really great because she's actually able to go in person, do online and Zoom for dual enrollment. So that gives her a little bit more of an immersive, I guess, education opportunity through dual enrollment. And she was really grateful for a lot of that academic rigor that she found through that.
That's great.
And then for me and Kayla, both of our schools don't have any structure for dual enrollment. So I think a lot of the times, I go to a basis charter school and Caleb goes to Phoenix Country Day School. And I think with some of these charter and private schools, a lot of the times, there's less awareness or accessibility for dual enrollment because I think usually like advanced placement or AP classes are more heavily emphasized. I think up until recently, I knew that dual enrollment existed, but I didn't have a lot of insight about the benefits of it. So I think just general more awareness would be helpful, and we'll get into that a little bit more later. And then Jimmy also goes to a basis school, but he has a specific career and technical education program. That is really great. And I think that's definitely a step in the right direction and a great alternative for dual enrollment because the CTE program was super helpful for students who wanted to gain experience for a specific field, which was really great. And then going a little bit into beyond our personal experiences, the specific problems that we've seen in students around us or communities around us. We split it into a few different categories. And the first main one is awareness. This is because, like I mentioned before, many students don't learn about dual enrollment or until junior year or senior year or even at all. And a lot of the times, that's too late to plan ahead, especially for students who are looking to gain more college credits so that it can save time down the road. From a lot of our personal experience, it's not included in ninth or tenth grade advising or course planning. And counselors and advisors across the state of Arizona usually aren't bringing it up at the extent that they should be. And then there's also often a lot of negative assumptions and concerns about dual enrollment, such as tuition costs, time, and/or amount of work. So there are a couple barriers to entry that if they aren't clarified by counselors or advisors or general Arizona information because there is no general awareness about dual enrollment, then a lot of those problems may arise. And then if we also look at out-of-state credit transferability, I think this was a main issue that we talked about among our panel because when we were approaching students asking why they were not choosing to do dual enrollment if they had that option at their school, I think one of the main concerns was credit transferability, especially for students who are not looking to stay in state for college or university. It's very hard for a lot of those credits to transfer, whereas for AP credits, a lot of the times, those are easier to transfer. So I think more specifically on that point, there's just no like unified resources or guidance that helps students understand specifically where their credits will or won't count. So there's just a general uncertainty about whether coursework will be rewarded and because having those credits is one of the main incentives for students to do dual enrollment if that access isn't readily available, it's hard for them to want to commit to that. And then a main point we also wanted to highlight was rural areas. A lot of districts don't have qualified teachers for dual enrollment and many rural areas also have limited to no community college within range, which is very restrictive. And then that obviously points to the fact that they could turn to a digital or online approach for dual enrollment, which is also hard because I think there are specific bandwidth issues among rural areas and also just general access can be difficult if there's no reliable internet connection. And dual enrollment also often, if not online, requires some sort of transportation. So because of the lack of proximity to community colleges and often a lack of public transportation, that can make it very hard for them to have access. And then we also wanted to highlight some legislative and administrative hurdles in regards to dual enrollment. I think one of them, most importantly being that there are inconsistent funding models for dual enrollment, which means that dual enrollment funding varies by the district and relies on local agreements within community colleges. And because only some districts can fully subsidize tuition, this causes disparities among the communities. For example, some students are able to have a lot of their dual enrollment covered by the schools or have much lower barriers to entries in regards to economic barriers, but a lot of districts force them to pay the whole price because they are choosing to take that class. And then there also is just overall a relatively complicated approval process because dual enrollment courses must meet curriculum standards and accreditation requirements. And this is a little bit complex when specifically teachers also aren't completely qualified to teach these courses. So high schools have to partner with local colleges and sign agreements for qualifications. So this brings us to next part, which is looking at potential solutions for some of the problems that we noticed. So like I mentioned before, the main issue is that there are a lot of barriers and just general awareness. So we wanted to improve the access by tackling cost awareness and eligibility challenges. So first, we wanted to lower or eliminate tuition costs for dual enrollment courses. And this is obviously easier said than done, but I think because there are so many disparities among dual enrollment, having some of that subsidization helped or covered through policy implementation could be very good. And then also allowing teachers to teach without a master's degree if they're otherwise qualified. I think having some development regarding like a qualification process for teachers to be able to teach dual enrollment courses, even if they don't have a master's degree could be good because that would just generally increase the amount of dual enrollment courses being taught. We also think that offering in-person classes or increasing transportation options for dual enrollment could be very helpful because statistics have shown that there is a twelve percent higher success rate online or in person than online for dual enrollment. And then we also wanted to make sure that classes transfer as full college credits across in-state institutions and make sure that there is general awareness about where credits can transfer. And then establish a state managed fund specifically for dual enrollment programs distributed based on student need and geographic equity, prioritizing rural and low-income districts to help overcome some of these barriers that we see. And then overall, we also wanted to just inspire a college-going mindset, and I think in regards to dual enrollment, a lot of this is made plausible with general conversations being brought up among Arizona schools, whether this is through teachers or guidance counselors. I think just making sure that students know that they have this opportunity to participate in dual enrollment will be really helpful and also ensuring that they're not only graduating high school, but looking at the opportunity to go to college or go to university because I think a lot of students just in their head immediately block it out as a potential opportunity for the future. So it's really important that even if we're just focusing on two classes, students who are able to complete six credit hours are far more like, far more likely to attend and finish college because they've already gotten that head start. And then things like college branded swag, making students feel welcome and able to participate in the dual enrollment process. And then we also wanted to emphasize the importance of support for educators, so making sure that providing, we're providing training materials and flexible credentialing paths. So I think something like a statewide teacher professional development program or something where there are online resources available for teachers who want to potentially go down this field and teach dual enrollment, making sure that they have their instructional support to give to high school teachers could be really good. So I think there are some programs within Arizona already that allow teachers to have like a discount on getting their master's degree while if they're like teaching at the same time or giving opportunities to make sure that they can take free classes at in-state colleges so that they can teach at their high school and also potentially be able to teach dual enrollment classes in the future. And just generally working with school districts to streamline scheduling, registration, and resource distribution. Oh, that is it. Thank you so much.
Thank you. First of all, thank you so much. This was a very thorough presentation and certainly built on some of the things that we heard about dual enrollment, particularly those things that are happening down in Yuma. Would love to, any questions for members of the board for our esteemed guest?
Just.
Dr. Core?
Thank you so much. And you know, I have just a keen interest and I just, a point of pride, we had our graduation last Friday at Arizona Western College. We had one hundred and sixty-eight high school students earn their associate degree. And this week, we'll earn their high school degree. Approximately a hundred and thirty-five of them were first generation. So we have taken to heart many of the suggestions that you have. We have flexible alternative credentialing. We've dropped, you know, the tuition at twenty-five dollars a credit hour. We make sure they all get the matador swag. So I love your, love your presentation and I'd be remiss if I didn't acknowledge Janice Palmer here and the good work of Helios to talk about dual enrollment. And I think we need a statewide legislative solution to create that college-going culture across this state. So appreciate all that you've done and look forward to working with you to implement these changes. Thank you.
I will go with Dr. Hightower and then Member Kravikis.
Excellent work. Thank you so much, Sophia. Thank you for leading the way and presenting all the challenges and opportunities that we have. The success of dual enrollment is clear, but the access and opportunities that students have across the state is not a clear path as you outlined. So I'm wondering... So I'm wondering, within the purview that we have with the State Board of Education, what can we do to unite a lot of the agencies and definitely Dr. Core legislatively? Because funding will definitely be a challenge to open those opportunities for every single high school student and start that communication and education earlier. So thank you again, but it is one of the priorities of the State Board of Education to have more students matriculate in higher education. So then from our perspective and within our purview, what is it that we are able to do in working collaboratively with the many organizations that exist in our state? Thank you.
Member Kevikis.
Hi, thank you. Great job. Very thorough. I love how it was grounded in the experiences of the members and I loved your thoughtful approach. The excellent report that Helios did a couple of years ago actually noted, I think it was 24 and a half percent participation rate statewide. Does that sound about right? The participation rate for students with disabilities was so low, they couldn't report it, meaning it was less than 2%. So clearly there's some work that we need to do there. I sent staff last night that, I don't know if you had a chance to see it yet, probably not because it was late last night, frequently asked questions that recently the State Developmental Disability Council did in partnership with Disability Rights Arizona. Because the problem is students with IEPs are told all the time that their IEPs don't count dual enrollment, which is not true. So there's some really easy advising, counseling, information distribution that we can get to try to get those numbers up. There's no reason that a child with speech language impairment, ADE, dyslexia should not be taking dual enrollment. So thank you, but to the extent that you can maybe even help us get that word out to other students, that would be great. Thank you.
Great. We'll go with Dr. Clay and then Dr. Webke.
Good morning. Your presentation was amazing. And I just want to let you know something, you have a voice, your voice matters. And your perspective causes us to move forward instead of running and sand. We have in Cochise County, a Student Advisory Council, lovely known as SAC. And what they've done, they are following your lead on everything that you do, your presentations. In fact, this presentation right now, we're going to be looking at that this weekend. You are making a difference. Never think that what you're saying doesn't matter because you're going to be the one who's going to make decisions for us in a couple of years. So don't ever think that you're not important. Thank you so much for your perspective. That speaks volumes. That counts. That blesses my heart. That blesses our hearts. You keep going. All of you keep driving on as far as your leadership walk. And we're going to constantly be behind you, cheering you on and supporting everything that you do. Thank you.
Thank you so much for that. We're so happy, or we're so happy we can help the SAC.
Love it. So Dr. Webke.
First of all, Sophia, very articulate and well-presented. I just really want to echo the remarks here by my fellow board members. I would like to figure out a way, I think you called them goals, but how we can turn them into action and really help advance this agenda. I totally support this and I think the more students that can take advantage of this in high school, there are so many benefits in post-secondary. And I just think that that is a really important area for us to really focus on and really make sure that we do something about it, not just have this presentation. Thank you, Sophia. You've got a brilliant career ahead of you.
Do we have any other questions from members of the board? Well, great. I will say that we have talked about workforce readiness as part of our strategic plan for this year. And I appreciated our member Kevikis's comments about addressing our special education needs. So some of the points that you have raised are things that we have talked about at great length. So thank you so much and we, congratulations. I think you're about to graduate and head on. So.
Yes.
Where are you off to?
Going to Stanford University.
Congratulations. Member Kevikis.
Not to put more on staff, but I'm wondering if we're going to need like a student advisory alumni group. I'm just saying, and I mean that somewhat jokingly, but somewhat serious. I mean, two or a year or two down the line, we would love to hear from you of like, what would you have done differently? Because I think you're going to, your perspective will be even more unique once you've made that transition. Good luck.
Shannon's taking notes. Thank you so much and congratulations. Okay, well, moving on, we are going to item 5B. And with that, Executive Director Ross.
President Haley, Superintendent Horn, members of the board. Today, we're going to be joined by Keith Kenny from JS Held, who is overseeing the two current districts in receivership, Antelope Union and Isaac School District. To table set, the charge of the receiver is to guide a district that is placed into receivership to long-term fiscal solvency. The board and its assigned receiver do not have statutory role or authority to implement legal consequences as part of the receivership process. It can be shared that the Auditor General's Office is reviewing information regarding allegations of financial misconduct at the Isaac Elementary School District. The board's receiver is cooperating with their office. Any determination of criminal activity would be addressed by the offices of the Attorney General or the County Attorney. Keith's presentation today will open with a brief update on Antelope Union, which was placed into receivership in June of '23. And then he will move on to the Isaac School District, which was placed into receivership in January of '25. Keith?
Good morning, President Haley. I was going to say Superintendent Horn, but there he is. And board members. As said, my name is Keith Kenny and I've been asked to give you an update on Antelope Union High School, who was placed in receivership on June 26, I believe, of 2023. Before I give you a quick update, I wanted to remind you why Antelope was placed into receivership. Initially, the district had overspent its MNO budget for five years prior to being put into receivership. Secondly, the district had been non-compliant with its USFRs since 2018. And third and lastly, the district had for a number of years had outstanding registered warrants in excess of a million dollars. And basically over five years, over $900,000 each year, up to a high of 1.4, I believe, prior to the receivership. So the first two, the budget, the over budget, before I go on to this, the over budget was in the first year of the receivership, the district underspent its MNO budget and its capital budget. And also was released from, or determined by the Auditor General to be in compliant with USFRs. That was the first year. We're in the second year of the receivership. And this year, the district is expected to underspend, again, underspend its budget, both MNO and capital and build a small reserve of $40,000 and $90,000. And they had continually, we had continually to be on plan with what was proposed by the receiver to reduce the outstanding registered warrants at the end of the year by $200,000 a year. We were ahead of that up through November of 2024. And in December 2024, the district was charged by the treasurer for an over-assessment judgment that was, that Agua Caliente won against the treasurer and was charged 1.2 million, over $1.2 million, which definitely put the district in a debt of $1.7 million on December 1st. Now, Clearwater Energy just recently contacted the district. And Clearwater Energy is the management company for Agua Caliente and offered to make a $250,000 donation to the district, which we thoroughly appreciate and will go a long ways in helping the district get out of debt. However, it's still estimated by the end of this year, the district will have a debt of 1.3 to 1.4 absent state recoveries. And I'll go to the next slide and I'll explain that. So how are we going to fix this problem of this overexpendage? Oh, I'm sorry. Okay, thanks. Thank you. So the fact that the district was, that the assessor over-assessed the Agua Caliente had nothing to do with the district. The district would have, whether if it was assessed correctly, still received the funds that it received. So in January, I contacted the ADE and was discussed with them how we would go about getting a reassessment of the state aid and have been working with them off and on. And it wasn't only up until early May that we finally got agreement with the assessor and the ADE to get the correct recalculation. As of now, I was told, I was told that they did get the corrected recalculation and it's going to be about $789,000 in state aid that we will get back for fiscal year 2017 to fiscal year 2025. And it is currently being reviewed. And once it's reviewed and approved, then we should be getting a credit for that, those dollar amounts. Secondly, because those dollar amounts, the corrected amounts would have been charged to the taxpayers and reassessed. I plan to go out in August with a special assessment for the difference. So by the end of next year, we will have collected all those funds. In addition to that, I believe by the end of next year, we'll be closed, if not out of debt, almost to a zero balance. Maybe $200,000 to the max, but very possible that they would have a zero carryover of outstanding registered warrants. That will conclude my updated presentation on Antelope. Let me know if you have any questions on that before I move forward.
Well, just please continue with your presentation and then we'll come back.
Okay, Isaac School District. As you know, on January 14th, Isaac School District was placed into receivership. Again, the main reasons was overspent in MNO budget and capital budget. That was reported after multiple submissions of the 2024 AFR. And they reported in the final version, reported a 2.9 million over budget for MNO and approximately $10 million over budget for capital. Additionally, Mayor Copacanelli Treasurer reported that the district had a negative cash balances with them of over $20 million. And at that point in time was refusing to honor any other warrants to the district. So the district was basically shut down financially. And lastly, again, district was out of compliant with USFRs since the fiscal 2023 audit. Seems to be a pattern when districts are out of compliant with USFR, there seems to be problems. So the USFRs seem to have some validity. Now, going on, the question is, the big issue was, what happened? How did the district get so far in debt? And the big issue is, the big answer is SFR funds. SFR funds were meant to assist the schools and were a gift, a gift to them. In my opinion, were a gift to the schools that you probably never, the schools are never going to see again. But this, in this case, the SFR funds were overspent by 7.2, SFR 2 and 3 were overspent by 7.2. Additionally, what we found was that there was another $6 million that should have gone into the SFR 3 grant, that never made it to the SFR 3 grant because they were overspent and was put into what's called E-rate fund, which was not allowed in inappropriate allocations. And thirdly, the district failed to complete its SFR 2 completion report and draw down the remaining $8.9 million that it had coming to it. And therefore had additional expenditures that were not reimbursed. In total, that was, that total was about $21 million, I believe. So let's see, you can go. Go forward. Oh, I forgot to mention the anticipated tax anticipated notes were coming due in July. That was another concern of the treasurer. I just wanted to make sure that you guys were aware of that. Going forward, I'm trying to keep this going. Did I go too far? Okay. Sorry, guys. Got a little bit. Okay. So how did this all happen? I guess basically, and the answer is, is the district lacked process procedures and controls to keep this from happening. Essentially, I mean, I even ran into that this year when I took over. The district had over encumbered many of its funds when we walked in and been trying to correct for all that, that the district was on the verge of overspending its budget. This year even more so. But essentially, in regards to the grants, the district had no policies and processes to, that would enable it to know where it was at any point in time of its spending. Additionally, the district, we found the district encumbered in expended funds for these grants prior to getting approval to, by the, by ADE. And those grants, in some cases, those expenditures may never have been approved and would have already been spent. Additionally, we found that the district, the only, the only check the district had and what was being spent in those budgets was when they went to do a drawdown. And then they would take numerous amount of time trying to reconcile what was in the grant to what was in the budget. And in more than one time, one case, they had to go and try to revise the budget before they could ask the drawdown to match what was expended to get the drawdown. So all those controls lacked even knowing what was in the budget. And additionally, when they, with those over expenditures, when they had to be moved, now you don't even know what your, how the other funds budgets are because you're moving additional funds in there that were never budgeted for those expenditures, causing additional over expenditures in other funds. In 2023, another delay in getting these drawdowns and getting these reconciliations was the fact that the district was on a global hold most of that year due to late filings and completion reports and early filing a single audit report. So even when they did have an opportunity to go down and draw down these funds, they didn't have enough time to reconcile and clear to get those funds drawn down. That's part of the reason why SFR 2, SFR 2 didn't get completely drawn down even prior to the completion date, prior to September of the closing of the district. So in summary, basically, like I said, SFR 2 was overspent by $5.8 million. SFR 3 by 1.4 is what we found. And there was an A about $8.9 million that the district lost the opportunity to get reimbursed for the expenses they had already incurred. And like I said before, there was another $6 million we found that was put into E-rate. And reviewing the board minutes and stuff, we found that on June 28th, 2023, the expenditures that were put in the E-rate were approved by the board to be spent out of SFR 3 and using SFR 3 funds. However, my belief is that they were never put in there because the SFR 3 was already overspent and put in there at that time. And in addition, we found that even after these E-rate was moved, the district continued to approve and spend additional funds out of SFR 3, even after it was already in trouble. And I gave you a few examples, 9/23, electric bus and vehicle charges were approved, furniture purchases were approved on 10/23. And on 2/24, district phone system was approved to be purchased for the district, et cetera. Let's see. Let's see. In summary, we found that approximately $3 million ultimately ended up in the MNO fund of this, about approximately $15 million ended up in the capital expenditures after multiple journal entries moving, and approximately $1 million moved to other fate and federal funds and cash counts also left off on there. Go back one. The other thing that we found is most of these expenditures and everything that occurred between 2022 and 2024. And the receiver with the district and the outside auditors have been working to try to fix the books that were for the misclassifications from 2022 to 2024, and we're in the process of refiling AFRs. For your information, I believe that in fiscal year 2023, once they're refiled, you will find that they, that the district had overspent its capital in 2023 that wasn't properly We were able to recover 5.9 of the 8.9 that was lost, was a great help, thanks to ADE reaching out to the federal government and getting them to grant permission to reopen the SFR 2 funds. So that was a help. And all those expenditures that we got reimbursed for were again between 22 and 24, which goes again to the requirement to refile the AFRs for 22 through 24. The reimbursements had, just have the effect of reducing the over expenditures in MNO and the capital accounts because those expenditures now become a part of the grant and were reimbursed. They were moved. So there was numerous, let's see. District actions. Did I list that? Movements? I got missed the one. Oh, there we go. That's where I wanted to be. We also found is that the district failed to react to numerous warnings. The district had, like I said, had been one of the highest risks by the auditor general for the last five years. We found the district, another contributing factor to the overexpending is, the district has continually had a decline in student counts and, but what we also found is that the district had continually increased its personal, personnel and contracted services. As I show you there, that it was, total was 50, in 2020, it was 50.5 million, and the total was 69.5 in 2024 that they spent for personnel and contracted service. In the report, if you've read the report, you'll see that I also, I took out the, all the contract services, only looked at educational labor services. And in that case, in 2020, it was, they spent $49 million. In 2024, they spent 63.5 with continually decreasing counts in the students. That things could have been corrected there. We've taken measures to make those corrections by reducing, closing two schools and reducing the, right sizing, basically, what I call it, the number, the number of teachers to this number of students needed. Now, again, I just want to point out, in the report, I said that the, that the board had, I hadn't had to override the board, but I did on Thursday. I'm sure you guys have heard that. I found the district, the board to be irresponsible fiscally and voting not to close the two schools, not taking, not, they haven't learned to make the hard decisions that need to be made in the district.
Keith, since you've sort of transitioned to that space, maybe, maybe we go to the plan for helping the district?
Let's see. Let me skip that part?
Yeah, let's just go to the plan first and then the board can ask questions.
Compliance, corrective action, estimated time. Okay, let's start with the corrective action estimated time. Okay. So basically, in regards to the overspent budget capacity, maintenance and operations, I've been, I'm trying to get, underspend that this year, but I'm running into a few stumbling blocks that might end up overspending a little bit of that, not to the extent that will be reported on 2024. Some of the issues that I've run into is that number of, the amount of expenditures that were prior to the receivership coming in, and I'm also getting, finding that there's invoices that are showing up that were from 22, 23, that never got paid, that got closed down and shut off, that now I may be responsible for as the receiver to get paid. Additionally, the change in the budget capacity limit, once we revised the fiscal year 24, there's potentially that they would have overextended the budget more than the 2.9. I'm estimating it won't be more than 3.9 there, and that's in the process of being finalized right now. And lastly, I don't know the reason other than the receivership, there's a number of staff members that are leaving, a large quantity are leaving. The district has a sick payout policy that had unlimited accumulated time that pays out upon the leaving, which I, which is known as an unrecorded liability. It was in excess of $4 million when I took, came in from the last time I saw, which is causes, which is a big problem for the district and especially in times like this when you have max access to this. There's no recording of that, accounting for that in your budget. They never, it's never been accounted for. So I'm going to be stuck paying out, I've been paying out right now as various staff members retire or leave lots and lots of money. I mean, I'll just give you one example, one period, not this paper, but paper four, I had three people had to pay out, totaled about $90,000. And I've got a bunch that are going to not, not come back the end of this year that we're trying to determine what that cost could be, but it could be 600,000 to 800,000. All those expenditures will force me to overspend the budget if I have to pay all that out. And that's based on policies. I am working to change that policy, which will change on July 1st, but I can't, I'm obligated by law to keep what they've earned up to the June 30th and honor that, but going forward slowly, in the long term, reduce that unrecorded liability to a reasonable number if the district continues to exist over a long period of time and eliminate that, that problem. In regards to the unrestricted capital budget, I don't have a quick solution for that because this, that with the corrections and stuff, it's going to be overspent between 17 million and 20 million. In fact, probably about 17 million for fiscal year 24, once it's all corrected, probably over 20 by the end of this year because there was a bunch of capital expenditures that were spent this year before the treasurer cut off any more spending on capital expenditure than the over expenditures. So it could be close to $20 million. There's no quick, easy way to get the, to remove, to reduce that, other than the year after year, they not, won't be able to spend any, any capital. Or if, once their district gets financially stable, the district could use some of its maintenance and operations to the extent it's not spending it and reduce that. So that could take a number of years to clear out. USFR compliance, that hasn't been the primary, other than we've been implementing changes as we're working in the district, but, but an actual plan, the receiver plans to put together corrective action plan based on the results of the 2024 audit, which is currently underway. Again, the 2024 should have been completed in March, however, it was found that there was errors in the 2023 and not, the district not reporting a governor's grant in 2023 that was discovered, had to go back and re-audit 2023, make corrections, plus all these changes here. And so that delayed even more the 2024 audit being completed. We're working right now to try to get that completed as quickly as possible. But once that audit report is done, based on those results, we will develop a corrective action plan, work with the auditor general's office to implement that plan and get it corrected. I would estimate by the end of fiscal year 26 that we would be substantially compliant. Won't see that in fiscal year 25's audit because of all the things that right now that I've seen happen, I wouldn't give us a clean audit there, but with 2026, they should be corrected, significantly collected.
So Keith, sorry, just for the sake of time, maybe let's stick to the broad strokes of what's kind of left and then we'll kind of try to wrap up in the next few minutes?
Okay. Let's see, in regards to the insolvency, the district should have sufficient funds to pay the $8 million loan that we've, did I skip all the purchases, all the sales? Oh, well.
Talked about that in broad.
Okay, okay. And I mean, basically, the district has received that $25 million loan, has sold some property that, and got the 5.8 million dollars, that gave us sufficient cash as a pooled amount that we should, and with what's coming in for the rest of the year, that the district should be able to pay all its bills from a cash standpoint for the rest of the year. Like I said, the issue I might have is in regards to overspending the MNO budget. Let's see, I estimate that it's going to take five to 10 years to pay back the $25 million. Let's see. Oh, there's my, all my influx of cash I was talking about that we came in. I'm sure you've read all that in the, in the report. Reductions, things that we've implemented so far, we have gone out and contracted for food services, clean services and landscaping services, reducing contracted services plus reducing staffing costs, reduced expenditures through reduction of force of employees. In 2025, froze unnecessary spending in capital expenditures, evaluated personal server, personal service agreements and canceled or reduced personal service agreements to probably a million and a half to $2 million for this year. Other things that we've implemented that will have an effect for next year for reduced costs, we, closing of two elementary schools, which we do some administrative costs and operating costs, we do, offered a reduction, offer, reduced number of renewal contracts based on 2026, basically at the school level, reduce staffing based on what anticipated needs are going to be and from the student needs. Went through the district's organizational chart, consolidated jobs and reduced 25 positions in the district's overall staffing for next year. We eliminated the performance pay for administrators and other employees that aren't paid, are paid out of MNO and not outside of the classroom site fund will still be entitled to the performance pay services.
So I think President Haley, Superintendent Horn, members of the board, Keith has covered a lot of what sort of caused the situation, some of the challenges that are facing, and then a number of the plans they have in place to get the district back to solvency. So this might be a good time for, for board questions?
Great. I just have, I know members have questions. It would be great if Dr. Clay and Dr. Cruz are there, if they're still joining us, if they're able to either have their cameras on so I can see them. I just had a quick question for Antelope Union. Will they, you mentioned that you had the contribution from Agua Caliente and there was a reassessment by the state, so they would get additional state aid. I did have a question about when it goes back to, I think, the taxpayers this, maybe August or so. Is that guaranteed that that will pass?
I'm working with the county and, well, obviously, it has to be approved by the committee there, but it should be. I mean, based on talking to the county superintendent's office, and they put together the, the tax rate, so it'll be, and we're entitled to a special assessment for those, I'm told. But I didn't want to overcharge the taxpayers, that's why I wanted to go after the state first, because of the legal formulas of calculating who, who shares what, based, and it's based on assessed values and stuff there. And I had done the calculation back in January and I figured we were going to get close to six and a half, six point to 700,000. I was a little bit shy because I won't go into details, but basically, so once we get that, there's only about a $400,000 special assessment to the taxpayers that would have been paid over the years.
Okay, great. Does anybody else there have questions for the Antelope? And then we'll dive into Isaac. Any other questions? Executive Director Ross?
President Haley, Superintendent Horn, members of the board, not a question, but this is something we want to make sure to acknowledge. Antelope Union was recently honored as having the second largest growth in rural schools for FAFSA completions. So good job to Keith and the staff at Antelope Union.
That's a great highlight. Thank you so much. So with that, I'm sure members have questions about Isaac. So with that, any questions? Otherwise, I have questions. Dr. Core.
Thank you for the report and thank you for, obviously, all your amazing work. No rational person could hear that and not be furious, but we appreciate what, what you're doing to help clean that up. So a couple of quick clarifications. We're talking about paying out unlimited sick time, not vacation. Am I understanding that?
That, that is correct. So the, yeah, the policy currently allowed to accumulate unlimited time and then based on the number of years, they will, they get paid anywhere from 50% of their time, it's up to 100% of their time.
Got it. Never, never heard of that. Okay. And then?
Now, they do have a, they do have sick pay, I mean, vacation time too, that will be paid out, but that's limited to two years.
And I, and I heard you say you're ending performance pay for administration as part of a plan moving forward?
Yes.
Is that to say administrators were receiving performance pay?
Yes, the district currently had a plan, which we're, I'm going to be revising, where everybody in the district got, in one big performance pay plan, program that's going on, but, which I've never seen before, because usually the teachers and stuff, they get paid, have a separate performance plan and to get paid, but everybody in the district.
Thank you. And then the last that you referred to, and of course, it was in the news, you overruled the board on closing the two elementary schools. Maybe explain to me and certainly perhaps my colleagues, what is the extent of your authority to do that? Is that, oh, period?
Yeah, yeah. And in fact, I mean, and, you know, if you guys choose to go forward and approve the plan that's been presented, I would ask that you keep these inquiries because they definitely need it, but that's under Arizona statute, section 15-103 and the letter, I, do you know the letter? Is it F? I'd have to look it up.
One of the 11.
One of the, one of the authorities granted me under section 15-103 to overrule the board. I have no control over who sits on the board, you know, how, or any decisions they make. The only authority I have over the board is to overrule their decisions that are fiscally or responsible, in my opinion.
Member Meyerson.
Thank you so much for the presentation. I think I have two questions, one for you and then maybe one for Executive Director Ross. First is, you had said at the beginning that there seems to be a mass exodus of teachers, possibly leaving the year as a result of the PTO plan.
And it wasn't only teachers, it was staff, there's staffing. Yeah, there's been, I think it's more fearful of the reason, what's happening in the receivership.
Understandable. And then I saw another data point on the slides that named, you're also doing a lot of non-renewals yourself of sort of, and so just how are you evaluating, obviously, we've made such an effort to ensure that the schools are open for children, how are we evaluating or how are you evaluating the appropriate staffing needed to make sure that kids have a teacher on their first day?
The, well, the evaluation was based, is based on a forecasted projection of kindergarten through eighth grade number of students. And then I personally didn't select who to offer to, I have no, I'm not, I'm not an educator and it's not my thing, so that was the staff that would go through and work with the principals and the HR department and superintendent and stuff to establish who to offer the contracts to, but the contracts were based on the positions needed. So if there was 10 third grade teachers needed, it would go through, so even though we closed two schools, some of those teachers were still required to be moved over in order to be, and, and it was about right sizing and it's based on standards, right sizing the classes and the estimates.
Okay, so you'll at least have authority over ensuring, you know, if we have X projection of students attending, you know, Y school, you'll be able to ensure that the numbers match in terms of sufficient staffing available.
Yeah, that's what we're working for now because we have a number of non-renewals. We have been advertising to fill those positions and stuff. We have been advertising to fill those positions and stuff. Obviously, yes. So the number of positions are based on the anticipated needs. Now, if there turns out to be much greater need, we'll do the, just like any other district, we'll go out and hire advertisers to fill that with those positions. If there's less needs, then we're going to have to make some adjustments accordingly.
Okay, thank you. And then maybe either for you or for Executive Director Ross, I think, you know, I think we also heard the, the reports of obviously that, I think it was Auditor General releasing the names of the next sort of set of schools that are on the sort of high risk list. And so just in light of this and the sort of extreme financial mismanagement that occurred here, you know, I would imagine that the schools that are on that list are also like, how they get out of that list. And so how do we sort of utilize some of the supports that we've got here on the front end? So that we're not in this situation again. And of the schools that are on that list, how can we, you know, whether it's through the work that you all do and kind of getting them some support to ensure that they know exactly what they can do so that we don't end up here again.
President Haley, Superintendent Horn, members of the board, Member Meyerson, the, we convene a regular meeting with the Department of Education, the Auditor, representatives from the Auditor General's office and from the county superintendents in which we compare a list, kind of list of, of schools of work concern. And in that meeting, upon, in addition to reviewing those schools, we look at who's directly providing support and guidance. And, and so there is a sort of regular check for that. And one of the things that can happen starting next fiscal year versus what could happen before is ARS 15107 and 15103 gave the power for the board to hold hearings considering for receivership or other options. Those were triggered by the county superintendent. A recent passing of a bill now allows that triggering to occur from the Arizona Department of Education as well. So there are more eyes now. And then again, where we work very closely with the Office of the Auditor General. There are still very specific requirements in addition to USFR non-compliance that can bring a school to a hearing of the board. But definitely there is a wider net now to sort of catch those schools.
Other questions? Dr. Webke.
You talked about a mass exodus of staff. Is that showing up maybe with the students and families? Like, I'm curious what shows up. It's very difficult.
It is. That's a difficult, that's the difficult of projecting next year. I mean, I haven't seen that decline this year. I don't know what's going to happen next year at this point in time, you know.
If the students don't show up, that's going to be another problem.
That could be a problem if they don't. I haven't, I haven't seen that at this point in time. I have seen staffing, you know, and when I say max exodus, you know, we're talking, you know, maybe 10% or 15%. But that's, yeah, yeah, that's, that's, that's quite a bit there. But I have, we haven't seen that effect from the student count. In fact, our student count was up from the original budget projections.
Is there a plan in place with the district to maybe really reach out? I guess what I'm curious is, are there reach out efforts to families to say, you know, we're open for business. We've got a great year ahead of us.
And we have been doing that, especially with the, with the parents and students of the two schools that have been closing. There's been a lot of community in the invitations to them. We're also going to be next year, there's a couple of new low income housing developments that are opening up in the district. We're going to plan to promote the school there and those, at those new openings and stuff there. So there, there are plans to do these things in trade, but obviously I can't predict 100% the future, what's going to happen, you know, and stuff there. So we have to be prepared for anything.
I just want to close by, I'll close my remarks. I'm late to this, being a relatively new board member. But I just really want to, I appreciate this board and your work on behalf of the students. But these are decisions that were made by administration and I think there are a lot of people like teachers and classified and certified staff that are caught in the crosshairs of this. And I just really want to applaud those people that are still there and continue that their work is appreciated. And I have no other words.
I would agree with you.
Any other questions? Dr. Hightower.
Thank you so much again for all the work that you have been doing and I'm really appreciating that there's going to be measures put in place, Director Ross. So the situation doesn't happen again to another school district. My question is similar to Member Meyerson as far as trying to keep opportunities for kids and having to make the very difficult decisions of fixing the budget situation. What are the determination that you use to still not only have teachers, but have opportunities for the students?
Well, I mean, typically every, every, every time we make a decision on something, we try to have the minimum effect where the students would be affected. So it's not like we're cutting programs or cutting anything that the students would normally be entitled to. It may be, you know, if there's a sports program, we may cut a little bit of something there or something there if we have to. But essentially the kids should be getting the same education that they were getting prior and, and having the same opportunities. And that's, that's, that's always our goal. It's getting rid of the waste, the over expenditures, adjusting to appropriate size. I mean, the one thing that they may see is slightly larger classes. I mean, because the district had, was, had too much space and over expanded these classes and stuff there. Class sizes got pretty small in times, which as you know, the districts are paid based on our student number ADM. So when you get these classes so small, you don't, you can't cover that. I'll give you another example. This district had an online program they started. They had maybe 30 to 40 students attending and they had nine, nine staff on, they were losing over $400,000 for the year just in running that program. I had to stop that program. They actually had two online programs, but this one was there and then they contracted out for another one. There, which they don't get much from, but so those are the things that I had to adjust.
Thank you for that. And I guess going back to Dr. Webke's advertising that programs, opportunities for kids are going to have a minimal impact compared to all the other stuff that you have to, to do in making the difficult decisions.
I have a few questions, if that's okay. First, thank you so much for your presentation and also for your report. In reading through the report, I was somewhat surprised in the red, under red flags that the Isaac School District had actually been on the Auditor General's warning list since 2015 and was somewhat surprised that this hadn't been brought to our attention earlier or perhaps interventions perhaps made 10 years ago. And so just wanted to get your take on that and would be interested to know a little bit more.
Yeah. Well, I mean, and I think Sean alluded to this legislatively, there was, there's legislative law requires, there's certain things, steps have to be taken before the state board is notified. I mean, I've been an advocate of looking at cash balances and expenses for a long time, but that does not come before the board. It's not a requirement and stuff there. And I think if they were looked at this, at the cash balances and someone would have questioned and things that would have come to light earlier. The uniqueness of this situation is the fact that ESER, ESER grants were three-year grants. Typical, typically grants are one year, they got to close out. So you're not going to have this extended period of time to build up this huge amount of loss. And because what happens if one, one ESER grant closed and it was over expended, they just moved into the other ESER grant. Well, it buys them another year, right? Before they see it. And that's what happened here. So all, and then you, but the huge negative balances, if somebody would have investigated that, that might have given you a notice earlier. But there's no requirement right now from that. So that, that's, that's all I can say in regards to this one. But typically you're not going to see that. You have one year.
Executive Director Ross.
President Haley, Superintendent Horn, members of the board, just to add some context to the question, President Haley, the auditor, the Office of the Auditor General had been working with Isaac for five years. So they had been out to the school, the Maricopa County Superintendent's Office had been working with the district. The, and I'm speaking on sort of behalf of Tim McCain from ADE who shared this in the meeting for receivership. The way that Isaac, the district had structured its annual financial report, its AFR in 2024 showed that it was $750,000 under budget. So the triggering for ADE wasn't in place yet, but there was enough concern that they kept going back to the district with those other agencies. They redid some of the budgets and then the debt emerged relatively quickly. And again, following on Keith's answer, in large part because of the, the closing for ESER 3 was September of '24 with a, there's always a 90-day completion report window. So it emerged really during that pocket when there was no longer the ability to move that debt.
I do remember that back in January for that emergency meeting, but still I just, I think the, the fact that the Auditor General has been sort of flagging the specific just school district for a decade, I just didn't realize that it had been so long. And I understand now that there's additional opportunities for notifying the board with the passage of legislation that the ADE can inform us. So I do appreciate that. One other question that I had is going through the report, both your slides and then also the report. There are a lot of numbers and frankly, it was hard to track all of it. Is it possible that you could provide the board through Executive Director Ross, just sort of where the debt is? Both annually and then cumulatively, it would just be helpful for us to understand what that looks like. And perhaps, perhaps maybe you're able to write off certain things so that we don't have to pay certain things back. But it would just help me visualize, I was reading through it and not able to keep track of it all. So that's my own deal. But it would be helpful for I think all of us to understand the significance of the, of the situation that we're in.
Sure. Yeah. I mean, when you say annually and stuff, you talk, you talk about their, their negative cash balances? Or are you talking about?
I think it would just be, maybe there's probably some clarification that I need of, you can have a negative cash balance, but also there's general debt that is, that needs to be paid back. And so I'm a little bit, I'm just trying to figure out what the picture looks like.
From negative cash balance from the funds, fund accounts and stuff like that.
So you have maintenance and effort and then you have the other.
You have two budget accounts, capital, but then you have other fund accounts that are called cash based, they said. You're not allowed, you're not supposed to spend those money, those funds unless there's cash in them now, the district. Because of all the movement of the, of the funds, again.
I guess maybe it would be helpful to have.
Not to trigger something, but yeah, but it's moving over time. It's constant movement because what's happened is, and that's why we're correcting all this and stuff. They would move them into a cash fund account that then, and go negative in the cash fund account that would get called out. It is more in the sense what it's to avoid overspending your MNO and your capital account, which triggers being notified, the state being notified.
President Haley, Superintendent Horn, members of the board, we have not announced this yet, but we will be having a school finance 101 session at the board retreat this year. So I think much of what you're asking for, we will be able to have folks come in and sort of explain it and break it down sort of in layperson's terms for me especially. And, and we'll answer some of those questions. And I, I appreciate what Keith is saying. I do want to say, you know, every time, we speak to Keith really frequently, every time we call Keith and say, hey, okay, so what's the snapshot? The snapshot has changed from the last conversation. So there is also just understandably that first year of receivership, but in particular this receivership. It's a lot of cleanup and, and so there's, it's hard to be definitive in the numbers as new things are emerging. But as that happens, Keith will be coming back to update the board quarterly. So.
I guess it just would be helpful to understand what happened as of January, what was the cash situation there and as well as the debt? And just help us understand visually rather than reading it, sort of in a chart would be really helpful if that's possible.
Where they, where they stood January?
Where January. So we have a sense of when you stepped in, this is the situation. Cause I feel like just in this report, the, the situation was actually more dire than we thought it was in January. You've uncovered a lot and you've also done a lot. So I think it'd be helpful for us to understand what was happening in January, where we are today. So that when we see you again in 120 days, we'll be like, okay, a lot more progress has been made. Cause I also have one other question related to the loan from Tullison School District. Is, am I correct in understanding, I think it was a $25 million loan. Some of that will then be used to pay back the TANs. Is that correct?
No, that won't be used.
There are actual resources available to them to pay that.
There, there are resources available that will be able to pay back the TANs. Basically, the 20, the $25 million was basically to get the district to pay the, it's basically to pay the treasurer. So over $20 million that, $20 million that they were owed. That left about a $4 million balance so that they could get payroll. Remember payroll was due of over $2 million, which they wouldn't have paid, even if I just paid $20 million to the things, because they would have put them back in the negative. So the, that was a floating dollar amounts to go there. And once we got all that together, we, we've had some additional funds. We had the 5.8 million come in and we had another $2 million come in through the, through a sale. And then we had, we, we, we still had quite a bit of tax revenue to be collected in April. And we have a big state aid holdback, well, about over $6 million in, in July that we'll get. So with that $6 million and a couple of million dollars that we've had from sales and stuff, we should have sufficient funds. And with the additional funds that came in between taxes and stuff there, we should have more than sufficient funds. I can tell you that our cash balance as of April with total pooled cash balance was over $8 million with treasurer as of April 30th. So we should be more than sufficient to cover with the remaining funds that are coming in to the treasurer. Does that answer that question?
Any other questions for members of the board?
Just for Executive Director Ross, you said a school finance 101. I'd like an O91 to start with, maybe a remedial course. And then I'll, I'll move up to the 101.
Me too. Member Kavik.
Thank you, members. I, I don't know what purview the board has on this, but I'd like to continue to raise the issue that I raised with Antelope Union. We have school board members who are elected to provide oversight and supervision, but we know they're average community members, which is wonderful. It's what the constitution intended. And I know the School Boards Association does do a lot of training. I feel like there's something there that we're missing, that we're not seeing. Cause how would an average school, if we're feeling this way right now and our heads are swirling, how does an average school board member execute what they're supposed to do? So just, I want to just throw that thought out there for all of us to be thinking about, how can we better support school board members to make those good decisions and provide the oversight they're supposed to?
Did you want me to answer that? No, I don't have, I don't have a solid answer, but I mean, yeah, the, I think the, I think you could, you could require that student, that board members, school board members attain a certain number of credits and, and set up a program that they, they, they go to these programs and learn. You're never going to find a school board member that's going to 100% understand school financing, fund, fund accounting. But they, they can understand the, what they should be looking for and asking questions and not to get, to get to the bottom answer. And if they, if they don't get the answer that they're looking for, they should keep asking. Or, or even maybe hire an outside person to come if they're suspicious, hire an outside person to come in and take a look at the books and stuff there.
Let me follow up on that. And I appreciate that. And you always have new members, right? We're cycling. I don't know that they have to be, that they have to be experts in school finance, but perhaps it's also a way that we structure agendas and the things that they're asked to vote on. I mean, I suspect I've been to enough school board meetings in the past, no, just like ours, there's a lot of things that are on consent agendas. That certain things have to get flagged and explained in a certain way. They shouldn't always know what questions to ask. They should be prompted to things, hey, red flag, here's a big issue, X, and this is what it means and know what you're voting on and instead of just on an agenda.
I will say that Auditor General's reports and, and you know, the high risk and other things do go to the board members directly now. And now the Auditor General's last two years have, have reached out and started, if you're on a high risk things, they come to a board meeting and do a presentation every year because people trying to stress the importance of understanding. So those, when those things come up, those red flags, the board members should be asking the questions. What is this? Why, why are we in this thing? So what does it mean? How we, how do we fix this? How we, how do we fix this, you know? And get answers from the administrative, the people who are doing this, get the answers that, that show them. And then they should be holding them accountable and having showing results, you know, like I have to come up, write a quarterly report and I have to come present to you guys. They should be requiring their staffing to, to show the, when they have those questions, what have you done? You know, what, how does it change? Show me, you know, those, those things. So there is those things that can be done.
And President Haley, Superintendent Horn, members of the board, member Kavikis, just one more piece of context as part of entering the receivership process, any district that is placed into receivership, there is a requirement that their school board complete 12 hours of professional development within, I believe it's 120 days, Keith? So that is part of the process.
It's in the report. Yeah. 120 days. They did, they did get 12 hours. Typically I like to keep, if, if I'm the receiver on, at the board, I like to try to continue that annually and semi, semi annually continuing to get them education. Because one of the, one of the measures that I have to be able to come before the board and say that they are acting fiscally responsible and that becomes, that becomes administration, that's a decision of whether the administration is doing the right thing and whether the board's doing the, if I don't feel the board's doing the right thing and doing that stuff there, I can't consciously come and make a recommendation to be removed from receivership.
That's great. We have Dr. Clay.
Good morning, everyone. Again, I'm just, the caveat on some of the things that was said. As far as a lot of the county superintendents, we do have training for our board members. And I'll say because of what's happened with these two school districts, we are really starting to focus on our school board members. I at Cochise County, we have some amazing school board members who are going to training. So we have the training from the trust, we have the training from ASBA, and then we also have training, usually the county suits train, provide training. There's also, I would also say that a lot of our board members right now are viewing this meeting and which starting to get them involved more with what's going on at the state level. But our biggest problem also is that in the rural areas, the lack of business managers. Okay. Usually our business managers are not, we, we get, we have what we have. They're not trained as much, they're not school trained. We have to train them and a lot of times they don't get to go to school, but they do the best that they know how to do. And I know that's not just in Cochise County. I know that's in a lot of the other rural schools. My, my suggestion is for the state, the, the Department of Education to help us in a business managers 101 training, not just for business managers who have gone to school, but those who are wanting to become business managers and start growing our own. Because in the, in the rural areas, it's hard to grow your own, just like it's hard to grow your own teachers. And we, we do need help in bringing that together. Now somebody will say that, well, we have ASBO, but ASBO costs a lot of money. We need, we need help from the state to give these trainings throughout the state of Arizona to our business managers so they can break things down to our board members also. And it also helps the superintendents because they're trying to run their, their school district and keep all, and try to keep everybody informed. It's a bigger job than what you think. So it would help us a lot if we start putting some things in place to grow our own business managers. We are putting things in place right now with our board members. And I believe because of these things that are happening right now, a lot of board members, they're, we've had, we got the attention now and they are being very, very assertive in learning things. But we have to put things in place to provide the opportunities for the whole ecosystem that has to do with business, I mean, with school finance. Thank you.
Any other questions for members of the board? Well, Mr. Kenny, thank you so much for your time today. We appreciated the brief and the update, so we'll see you in 120 days.
Exactly.
We're all good. All right. Well, thank you so much. I think we'd like to take about a 10 minute break or 15 minute break. We'll reconvene at 12:10.
Okay. All right, we will get back to business. We are now moving to item five C. And this is a presentation and discussion of essential standards in grades three through eight. Executive Director Ross.
President Haley Superintendent Horn, members of the board. Back in December twenty twenty four, long, long ago. Linda Burrows, the Deputy Associate Superintendent of Academic Standards at the Department, came to present to the board on their work around essential standards. And at the time, some potential changes to the third through eighth grade A A S A exam. The department has sort of resolved that work, so we wanted them to come and update the board and the field. So Linda.
President Haley Superintendent Horn, members of the board, thank you so much for having me here today. Some like Executive Director Ross said, my name is Linda Burrows and I'm the deputy associate superintendent of academic standards, a little bit of a mouthful. And I'm here to present today on what we have come up with for the essential standards project that Superintendent Horn tasked us with last year. Here we go. So this started with a goal that Superintendent Horn had to make sure it was very clear that teachers understood and knew exactly what was on the test were what standards they had. So it was just, there wasn't any confusion with that. So that's what started this whole project. So today, what I want to share with you all is really what are the essential standards? What's the decision that we came up with as the, at the agency? What's the impact that these essential standards will have on the A A S A test? What are the benefits to identifying essential standards for teachers and schools? And then what are the next steps that LEAs and teachers need to take going forward? So to start with, with the definition of what are essential standards? We started with the idea of, we wanted to make sure first and foremost that we stayed within the current blueprint, that everything we did was in that line, so it wouldn't be too disruptive for teachers. So as we were asking ourselves, what do teachers want? What is going to help teachers really target and focus their teaching to make the most impact for student learning, both in ELA and in math for grades three through eight? And it came down to the idea of more reporting. Teachers wanted more reporting from the A A S A to better than inform instruction for those kiddos next year. So keeping within that current blueprint, that's what we ended up doing. So A D E on my team, we pulled together a group of stakeholders from grades three through eight for English Language Arts and Math. We looked at ideas, that idea, that overriding question of what do we want more reporting on the A A S A to then inform that instruction? We brought in stakeholders, teachers from all over the state, higher education experts, and then outside experts as well. And over the course of a few months, this stakeholder group met to really determine when we look at our current standards, as we look at the current blueprint, what are areas that teachers would like to have more informed and more informed reporting on? And that's where the, that's where the essential standards came. So the way the standards are set up on both ELA and math, they are set up into clusters. And currently, the way the current blueprint is and the way we get reporting from Pearson for the A A S A is we get that at the very high level cluster level. So when we identified essential standards, that now has let us within the current blueprint, identify new clusters that we can get new reports for teachers going forward. The A A S A test will stay exactly the same. It's the same length. It is the same duration and it is the same standards. It's the reporting that we've identified that will help teachers going forward with that. So here's an example of the, or here is the A A S A ELA blueprint. And you can see on this blueprint that we have reading standards for literature, which roughly for forty two questions on a test is between twenty six to thirty five percent of the test. That is the report that students, teachers and schools get is they just get a big report that says reading standards for literature. And that's what they understand. Now, what we've identified is within that current blueprint, given the number of questions with the essential standards, as Bethany's team creates a new form every year. If there's a way that they can add a question or two within that, that's identified as essential, they will add those questions as opposed to other ones. So say, for example, if you have ten questions within this reading standards for literature on the next form. We've identified standards within there that are essential. We need to swap out some of those ten questions and add in new questions. Now we make sure that when we are swapping out those questions and creating that new form, that we target those essential standards, so that way teachers get that reporting at the end of the year to then inform instruction. Couple of questions, why not all clusters and why not all standards? In order to maintain the validity of the test and make sure that we have the not lengthening the test and increasing the number of questions or the time on the test and staying within that current blueprint, it's not possible to give reporting on every cluster and it's not possible to give reporting on every standard. We'd have to almost double the length of the test in order to do that. And that was not something that any of our feedback from stakeholders were interested in in doing at this point in time. So that's the ELA portion. For the math, it's a little different. The categories for the clusters are more defined. So it's going to look a little bit, you're going to have more variety between the grades with the reportable clusters for the math standards. So to give you an example then of what this looks like in action, I've taken and done a screenshot for some of the different grades that we have. So if you look at the first one, it says reporting clusters for grade three, this is math. Originally, you would get a report on operations, algebraic thinking and numbers in base ten. And that would be the report that LEAs would get on how kids did. Now, because of the identified essential standards, we're able to hone that, those number of questions to make them reportable within the current blueprint. So now schools will get information on represent and solve problems involving whole numbers and multiplication and division. They'll get a report that has multiply and divide within a hundred and a report using place value to understand it. So while we can't give all of this, because that again, like I said, would require increasing the test. This allows us to really focus on what are those standards that teachers would like more information on that they can then share with next year's teachers to make sure that they can help improve that and really refine that, that learning. You can see in the grade six math, again, because math has different clusters, there will be some variety within the different grade levels. But what we've done is identified these and make them very visible in this bright green color and with the asterisks. So that way people know which ones are are highlighted for being, having higher reporting on the test. At the very bottom of this, I just want to point out, this is the reporting clusters for eighth grade math, eighth grade ELA. ELA, because it is a little bit more standard across the grade levels from third through eight, you will see that instead of just getting a report on reading standards for literature, reading standards for informational texts and then readings or writing and language. Now schools are going to get key ideas and details, craft and structure under literature. They'll also get reports on key ideas and details, craft and structure for informational texts. And they're going to get reports on writing and language. So again, we're increasing the amount of reporting that schools will be able to get that will then subsequently inform instruction the following year for those kiddos. So what's the impact on the A A S A? This is one of the big questions that we get. So the A A S A is still going to test all the standards. They're all required to be taught. The number of questions will stay the same. The number, the current blueprint that has those percentages will stay the same. All this means is that when Bethany's team starts to develop the new form, when they're plugging those questions in, in those percentages, they're going to make sure that if a cluster is identified as an essential standard, that gets a higher priority over say, a standard maybe that doesn't, isn't identified as, as essential. So some of the benefits of what essential standards will do. Essential standards are going to be able to provide teachers with an increased focus by this new report that they will get. This can guide teachers to create more targeted interventions to help improve mastery within that cluster for those students. Like I've said, it does give a whole new report that teachers will have that gives them that cluster level data that will be at the school and the LEA and the classroom level. And then the nice thing, because we have very purposefully stayed within the current blueprint, there's no need to change curricular decisions for schools. There's no need to change the scope and sequence. If you were spending twenty five to thirty percent of your time on reading for literature, you still want to spend twenty five to thirty percent of your time on that, knowing that that is an essential standard and it's going to come out with that percentage of questions on the test. So there's no reason to have to create and buy new curriculum for schools. There's no reason to even have to redo their scopes and sequences. It really is all about the reporting and then that reporting informing instruction for that following year. It also means too, that with regards to the standards, the essential standards will be in place until we update or redo the standards for both ELA and math going forward. Which at this point in time, both our English Language Arts standards and our math standards are very much in line with what national standards are. So there's no reason to need to update them at the point, at this point in time. So next steps, really what this means for LEAs going forward. One, they should look at the essential standards. They should look at their scope and sequences and make sure that their scope and sequences align with that current blueprint. I know when I was in the classroom, I had no idea that there was even a blueprint or anything out there. So it's good just to kind of remind it, bring awareness to schools that, hey, we do have this information out there that A D E is transparent. They're sharing, use that to create your scopes and sequences and use that to get your high quality instructional materials going forward. And then for, and that's really what schools just need to do is think about when they're creating something, targeting those essential standards, because those essential standards will have, be targeted for a higher proportion of questions on the test, keeping within that current blueprint. But again, there's no need to buy a new scope, new curriculum. There's no need to have to redo your scope and sequence. As long as it's within that current state board approved blueprint, you should be, you should be good to go. Now, what my staff has done as well as we've put online and informational video, we've created all of our resources where we have highlighted what are essential standards, again, to maintain the highest level of transparency for schools. So there's no question as to what's essential and what's not essential. We also run the works. I know my ELA team has finished. Again, because all standards are tested, you still have to teach everything. It's just some of the standards are going to have a few more questions than other standards on the test. And so what my ELA team has finished doing is creating, when you look at the non-essential standards, right? How do those support the essential standards? Again, emphasizing the fact that every standard is on the test, every standard is tested. But those essential standards will have a higher proportion of questions on the test than other standards. But yet those other standards that are not essential do support and help the child's learning as they're going forward. And then the math team is in the process of that. So with that, and I know I go fast every time I'm up here in front of you all. So I am available for any questions that you may have. Are you ready? Dr. Hightower?
Thank you so much for the presentation and most importantly, thank you so much for taking feedback from the field and then working with the stakeholders to provide that guidance. Because I know with over two hundred and forty school districts, over six hundred charters, and many of those systems were creating those essential standards individually. So having the guidance from the state and the Arizona Department of Education will be very positive and will be very helpful. So thank you for doing that work and also for listening to the field. I know we'll be talking about the exam RFP coming up, so we'll, we'll, we'll talk more about that when we get there. But this will be a lot more supportive of the educators in the classroom and the work they're doing. Thank you.
Thank you. That was the idea.
Member Meyerson.
Thank you so much for the presentation. This is very exciting. Just to your point. Definitely, you know, I think we'd all call them power standards or, you know, all creating them ourselves. So appreciate this work so much. I'm wondering, you know, what role, if any, the department might be able to have in, you know, I think there's, in one of our last meetings, we talked a lot about, you know, the science of reading aligned curriculum and the list that you all have done at, put together in helping schools pick a curriculum that is aligned to the science of reading. I'm wondering, it seems like with the maybe three most used curricula, which I think were C K L A into reading. The other one, somewhere here, and wonders. If, if, if the majority of schools are using those three curricula, I'm wondering what, again, if any, the department's role is in, do those three curricula line up with the essential standards? And so again, they might be aligned to the science of reading, but how are we ensuring that kids are getting what they need in terms of then being able to show success on the end of your assessment? Is there any sort of crosswalk or analysis that we might be able to do to like help schools who might be in the process of selecting a new curriculum or reevaluating a curriculum that they have to ensure that there's that alignment?
President Haley Superintendent Horn, member Meyerson, that's a really good question and I'm glad you asked that. So it is something that we recognize, right? Schools need help, LEAs need help. How do you pick high quality instructional materials? So it's something that my team is actually in the process of starting. There's a lot of work already out there and we don't necessarily need to reinvent the wheel. But it is something just to have that guidance that when you're looking at a curriculum, what does, what do you do and where do you start? And how do you align that to the standards to make sure that what you're, what you're buying and you're spending all this money on is aligned to the standards, which then aligns to the A A S A test? Because curriculum people and salespeople are really good at their job. And sometimes they'll sell you something that doesn't really align. So what my staff is doing is we're working on creating some high quality instructional material guidance for the field. And it's just basically a high level that if you're an LEA and you need to purchase a new curriculum, right? What's the first thing you should do? What should you look at? What resources do you have? What questions should you be asking publishers? What kinds of evidence do you need to see in their research? What, and making those types of things? So we are actively in the process of doing this and when we get that done, we will be posting that online for, and this is for every content area for every grade level. Now, obviously with the move on when reading program, part of that is already done. That's part of what my team does when they vet curriculums, both the core curriculum, supplemental and intervention curriculums. They actually look at that, look at the research that the publishers provide. But for every other grade and every other content, we don't. And we just have recognized that this is an area that schools and, and districts could use some, some assistance with. So we are in the process of doing that at this time. Any other questions for members of the board? Dr. Clay or member Kevikus?
Yeah, I was just hesitating. I don't know if it's better for the next session. But you said a couple of times that all standards are assessed. Is that numerically true? Like, and I don't know what the number is, but let's just say there's fifty standards for third grade ELA. Are all fifty of those on the test? Because my understanding that wasn't true.
Yeah. So President Haley Superintendent Horn, member Kevikus, yes and no. So yes, all standards are assessed, but sometimes within one question, you may have two or three standards that are assessed in that one question. Or you may have a standard that's a supporting standard that you have to know that standard. And so you have to know standard A in order to answer it using standard B. So in that way, yes, all standards are assessed, but it's not a one to one where it's like, oh, here's standard one, here's question one. Here's standard two, here's question two. So it's, it's not like that.
That's helpful, but I have a little follow up question then. Is that true every year? So. So, okay. So every standard is assessed every year in some way, shape or form?
Yes, ma'am. Okay. Thank you.
Dr. Webke.
This is just more curiosity. The department has always done a really good job of providing ongoing professional learning for teachers around these standards. And I'm just curious how that is, how these essential standards are in woven into that? And what kind of things are you doing to update and stay current and making sure it's available for teachers?
President Haley, Superintendent Horn, Member Webke. Another great question. So obviously that's what my team does, right? We are the professional development people, the probably the biggest provider of professional development for the agency. So my team is out in the field constantly. And so we have put all of our resources online. We have a special page devoted just to essential standards that actually links right off of the main essential standards page. We have created a slide that is included in every one of our professional developments. So that way we're bringing awareness to it. We also have a Arizona Digital Educators Library, which is a free online resource where all of our standards are in there. We have free videos, we have, um, lessons, we have an AI lesson builder on there. And those standards are also tagged as essential standards. And then what that definition is, that this just means that this standard, while all standards are assessed, this standard that you've picked or highlighted may have more questions on the test, depending upon the form each year when it gets built. And so it is something that we're actively, we put it out there in newsletters, on the PD, our conferences that we do. We're trying to bring as much awareness as possible to that.
Any other questions for members of the board? Okay. Seeing that they're none, thank you so much for joining us today, Dr. Burrows. We really appreciate it.
Great report, member.
Awesome. So moving on to item, five D, uh, we'll now move, I did count, I knew we're on number four, but as in D. Now move to item five D, which is a presentation and discussion of the RFP and procurement process for the statewide assessments for science, math and English language arts. So with that, Executive Director Ross.
President Haley, Superintendent Horn, members of the board. Uh, the contracts for the statewide ELA math and science exams now all expire in 2027. And so it is time to kick off assessment procurement season, uh, in which the board and the department worked together to build an RFP uh, and select assessment vendors for 2027 moving forward. Uh, with us today, we have Bethany Spangenberg, who's the Deputy Associate Superintendent of Assessment at the department to talk about that process.
Good afternoon. It's afternoon now. Good afternoon, President Haley, Superintendent Horn, members of the board. Um, thank you for inviting me here today to share with you, um, our proposed assessment RP timelines. All right. So as of this morning, our AZ Science contract has been extended to, um, it's actually June of 2027. So we do have two assessment contracts that will be ending soon. So we need to start, um, the process of developing and going up for an RFP so we can award new contracts. Just for context, I know there's a lot of questions usually around assessment and what's happening long-term as we're preparing, um, contracts that are ending within the next couple of years. There has been no indication from the US Department of Education that anything with assessment or accountability will be changing. Um, and also the US Department of Education has confirmed with me peer review timelines. So submitting evidence that our, um, assessments are valid. Uh, and those are going over the next few years as well. So no indication, we're planning on everything as usual. So just kind of a high level of timelines, how long it takes to go through in our, our P process. Um, we would start the kickoff with our procurement, just making sure that we have those conversations about, what we need to happen, when we need it to happen and documentation that we can support as we go through the process. Then there will be a long period of feedback, gathering feedback, working with the state board and, um, external stakeholders from our educators, our community and parents. Um, and then my program team to make sure that the required, the RFP is drafted in a way that we, um, will be able to receive, bids and award a contract that meets our needs. That does take quite a while to enter a process. Once that is finalized, I would come back and, um, share the RFP draft with the state board to approve to, um, release it. Once that is approved, we'd post the RFP for bids and we could, that whole process takes a little while responding to questions, offering clarifications when necessary from the potential vendors. Then the department would gather a, an evaluation committee and they would meet to review the bids that were submitted to us and come up with a recommendation. At that point, once we have a recommendation, we need approval from state board and also the joint legislative budget committee to, um, approve the funding that goes along with the, the assessment. Um, and then we would be able to formally award a contract to a new vendor or the same vendor, to a vendor, a new contract. So just again, looking at funding, um, we are limited by the funds that we have available for our statewide assessments. So, um, the goal is to try to stay with what we have allocated to us. However, there are options if additional fu- funding is required. So we would need legislator approval. Um, and then after we have that RFP recommendation, we would know exactly what dollar amount that would be tied to any kind of request that we'd have for funding. So looking at our timelines and how long each of these parts of the process take, we're looking at early summer to go through feedback from our stakeholders, state board, our educator committees, community members, and parents. And then late summer have a final RFP to be able to bring back to the board for approval. In the fall, we would be able to post the RFP, conduct those evaluations and have a vendor selected for recommendation. And then over the winter, we would be able to present that recommendation to state board for approval and to, um, the joint legislative budget committee for review. So looking at this timeline, we're looking at having, uh, an idea of who we want um, at the end of this year, 2025 or early 2026, um, but not to implement until summer of 2027. And that would give us time for any kind of transition work that needs to be done in between contracts. So looking at that transition timeline, um, I have all the details of what that looks like between the old contract and the new contract happen once we know who that new contractor, the new vendor is. So all that is coordinated. We don't know exactly what that looks like quite yet. But types of things that have to happen, um, when a contract ends is we hand off materials, items, documents, anything from the old contract. And then also we may need to develop new materials, new trainings, new manuals, if there's a new platform involved. Form construction, item development, some of these processes cover long periods of time. So when in that transition period, does it go from one contract to the next contract? Um, and so of course, the more changes we have, the more time we need to plan and to make sure that we have that process all set up from contract to contract. So we are going to be looking at beginning the RP process. We would like to combine EZ Sci and AAS A onto one contract at the elementary level and remove EZ Sci from high school. So that would give us, uh, that our elementary assessments would definitely be on the same platform. If AAS A and EZ Sci were separate, they could be awarded to different vendors and we could have different platforms involved. Um, our high school assessment is going to be a nationally recognized high school assessment. So if we were going to do that, that would need a science component. Currently, our students in high school are taking ACT and AAS A, both science in high school. So that's a lot of testing. Um, so we're just looking at ways that we can make it a little bit easier for educators and our students to get that science in high school without having to take two assessments. Definitely a conversation that we will be having in the future. And then our, um, just looking at the language of the contract, what we would need for our elementary assessments looks different than what we would need for our nationally recognized high school assessment. We do so much development for our elementary assessments that our role is a little bit different than our role in facilitating the administration of a nationally recognized high school assessment. So, um, from our end, it looks a little bit, um, it makes sense to kind of separate those because of the requirements that we would be asking for. All right. So I, well, um, would just work with you. We'd begin the RFP process for AA, uh, AAS A and EZ Sci. Um, and then we're looking to combine the AAS A and EZ Sci into one contract for elementary and a separate for our high school assessment. And then, okay, I know you have questions from before, and then if you have questions about the RFP as well.
So thank you so much for your presentation. I suspect members have questions. Any questions from the board? Member Krevikis.
Hi, thank you, Bethany. I just need a clarification. I got a little confused. So we're moving, so right now I know an elementary EZ Sci is separate from the ASSA, right? Correct. So yeah, they're like separate, yeah. And the move to combine the two, that makes sense. Explain to me what's current. I don't think I understood what the status quo was in high school, let alone the change.
Okay. So in high school, um, up until next year, ACT required science as part of their test. So as our national, um, high school assessment, we had to do science. We also use EZ Sci for accountability. So they're taking those two high school set assessments. EZ Sci is all on one contract, five, eight and 11. And then AAS A, ACT and ACT Aspire are on a different contract.
I didn't realize high schools take two assessments. Okay.
Yes.
Okay. That's interesting. Thank you. Um, any of this affect the, um, MSAA?
No. Um, thank you for asking, Member Krevikis. This is a different contract than MSAA. Yep.
Any other questions from the board? Member Hightower, thank you so much.
The field is very excited, um, to have a new assessment that's, um, hopefully better aligned than what the schools have right now. I do appreciate all the stakeholder input and feedback and involvement, um, in starting this, this new process. So I know, I know this is just the, the beginning, but there is a lot of excitement to have an assessment that hopefully is more aligned to what kids know and what we see in schools than what the outcomes that are being shown right now.
Thank you, Dr. Hightower. Yes, this is a good opportunity to kind of look at what we're doing.
Yes. Member Krevikis.
Hi, um, I'm assuming that part of this broad conversation, they'll also be especially like in stakeholder groups, talk about parent reporting that comes out, cause I think that's usually baked into the RFP a little bit.
Um, yes, Member Krevikis, thank you. Um, there, anything that we want to make sure that we have available to our educators, to our parents, is definitely going to be part of the conversations that we have as we build the RFP.
I like to think I'm a pretty well-versed parent, but half the parent reports are still overwhelming to me. So when the time comes, I'd love to be a part of that. But also, and I know you can't fix half of what I'm going to say. One of the statistics that sticks with me all the time, I follow Be a Learning Hero. I don't know if you know of that national group. They do amazing parent survey work. And one of the things they talk about every year is this constant statistic that 90% of parents think their kids are proficient, but yet of course on test scores, they're not. Know that it's name or state. So it's really that disconnect, or I call it the mixed messages that we get between teachers and grades and that. And I said, I know you can't fix that whole problem, but that's what I'd really like to start addressing. And I think nationally, we're doing a better job on parent reporting and testing. But I think we're still far from it, because there's still this huge disconnect of what they think is, where they think their children really are.
Yes, I hear the same thing. So it's good to take a look at how we can kind of streamline the data that we're giving and what it means and how it's aligned to what they're already doing.
Just a quick question, um, just thinking through these different assessments, how are you thinking through the contract and the component scoring? We found this past year that there was so much, uh, interconnection between the calculations. And perhaps there was a suggestion, like if you added, maybe this was a better question for Dr. Burrows, but, um, if you added a few extra questions, perhaps you could get at it. I'm just interested, like, what do we need to consider for the RFP to ensure we're able to collect the information so we can then report all the different elements of our A through F letter grades?
President Haley, thank you. Um, that, that is definitely something that we have to include when we do our, um, our conversations and have some information about what to think about. There's a couple of ways to approach that we could, um, look, plan backwards. So what do we want to report? How do we get there? And see if those options are something that our community members would, um, appreciate. Um, we have our blueprint that has been approved, approved by the state board, so we can look at that again as well. Um, if that's something that the board is interested in opening and making some adjustments to.
Any other questions?
Here we go.
Awesome. Well, thank you so much. We really appreciated the presentation and I don't think we have to, yeah, that's just an FYI. Thank you.
Thank you.
Right. Moving to item five E, uh, this is a presentation discussion regarding the State Board Educator Discipline Report of 2024. Executive Director Ross.
President Haley, Superintendent Horn, members of the board. Jessica Mueller, who's our Policy and Research Administrator and just one of the smartest people I've ever met. Uh, every year puts together an annual educator discipline report, uh, which combines all of the educator discipline data from the prior year, looking for trends. Typically, we actually have that report out in February. There was a little delay in gathering some data this year, uh, and so Jessica's with us today to present.
Thank you, President Haley, Superintendent Horn and members. I'm actually just going to kick this to Deputy Director Bruce Duplante to introduce investigative process and the work that entails before we get to the adjudication of the case.
President Haley, Superintendent Horn, members of the board. I was asked just to briefly, um, just kind of reiterate, um, some of the statutes in the process that are, that are involved in our discipline, um, and our responsibilities. And so, um, the first slide highlights, um, Arizona revised state statutes, um, that empower the board, especially, uh, 15203, to investigate every complaint, both certified and non-certified. These statutes also include the fingerprinting requirements prior to being certified and, and working. The, um, it includes the LEA's role in checking the state system prior to hiring, um, certified and non-certified. It includes reciprocal out of, of other state disciplines. So folks that receive discipline out of state, but they're also certified here, or they come here prior to that discipline, that you can take action, um, in reciprocal, in reciprocity, um, for their, for their, um, consequences there. These statutes also include defining crimes that result in summative actions and other actions that you can take. Um, and it includes also, um, the, the reporting requirements for LEAs on immoral and professional conduct in their duty report. On the next slide is just kind of a really brief, high-level look at our process. And so complaints come in, are reported to the state board through a variety of sources that, uh, Jessica will highlight for you. Again, all complaints are investigated, so it moves to the investigation phase. That timeline can vary due to the nature of the allegations, uh, criminal. You know, we could be waiting for another agency to be taking action and then, uh, move it through our process. So that can really be a range of, of time. Then it moves to the enforcement actions, which includes your, the P-PAC committee, attorney generals making recommendations as to consequences, could include the hearing, could include settlement offers that you get. You have several of those on, on your agenda today and also summative actions and surrenders. And then it moves to you, obviously, in, in the last step to receive those recommendations for P-PAC or those actions and, and to take action. So that's just a, a light overview of the statutes in the process, and then I'll kick it to Jessica.
Terrific. Thank you, Deputy Director Duplante. Uh, so the purpose of this enforcement action report, we also call it sometimes just educator discipline report. It is released annually, covering a calendar year rather than fiscal year like we might be used to. And so this covers an update, including the cases from the previous calendar year and then tracks the data across all of the years that we started gathering it, which was 2012. Uh, the first year of this report was 2018 and we get different pieces of data that we grow each year, especially, um, as our purview has, has changed over non-certificated educators. Uh, the information from this port is, report is used to guide the training for school leaders and staff. And it, it, it arms us with an understanding of what's happening within the context of these educator discipline cases. Okay. And so you can see from this chart that our cases have increased over the years. In 2024, there were 325 actions that you as State Board of Education members have taken. Uh, the reasons for some of these increases is increased funding by the legislature for investigative staff and administrative support, as well as counsel and legal representation from the Assistant Attorney General's Office. Additionally, there is increased purview of the, over those non-certificated persons. This began in 2012. Additionally, there is increased purview of the over those non-certificated persons. This began in 2012, 2022, and has grown significantly over the years in 23 and 24. And so this this higher number doesn't always reflect that there is increased discipline or in in uptick in immoral or unprofessional conduct for educators, because the rate that we track of discipline still remains as less than 1% of all certificated educators that have ever been disciplined by the board. So the source of complaints remains very high with the school officials representing 50% of the complaints that are coming to the investigative unit. And then DPS, FCC, these fingerprint clearance card status updates that come directly to our chief investigator represent 22% of the cases in 2022. This trend of school official and DPS FCC being the two highest sources of complaints has been ongoing for many years. And it has grown, however, by 6% with the school official from last year. The other sources where we may receive complaints include the certification applications. So sometimes they'll check a box, explain that they had an arrest in the past or a conviction, and then that application will be reviewed by investigators. Additionally, these statements of allegations can come from parents. We also receive other media alerts, Google alerts regarding educators and in cases that have come up. And then the investigators may choose to open a case and investigate. As well, we receive state and local jurisdictions alarming us that there is is a case being opened against an educator. What the NASDAQ database entries represent is typically reciprocal discipline with another state, that an action has been taken on a teacher's certificate within another state. And so what we know about gender is that female educators represent the majority of educators within Arizona schools. Male educators in this enforcement action report, on average, reflect 61% of the cases. And in 2024, this dropped to 58%, but it fluctuates year to year, and there's nothing discernible that we can track within this trend. And then certificate type, and I'm sorry, this slide has so much text there, it's a little bit harder to read. So educators can hold multiple certificates. I think we're all well aware of that. So within this case, we apply a hierarchy that's been developed by the Director of Enforcement Actions and and reviewed by the Executive Director and Deputy Director that is based on the impact and vulnerability of the student. And so an administrator has oversight over all of the educators, and so they would be at the highest of our hierarchy, being that they have substantial training as well within mandatory reporting and other other areas. So the trends that we see here on the chart is that secondary teaching certificates and substitute certificates represent the two highest types of certificates that were held by the educator at the time of discipline. In previous iterations of the report, we were able to gather data shared by the Department of Education to track this rate of discipline. And what we were able to learn in 2021 from that review is that the rate of discipline was highest for secondary, emergency teaching, CTE, career and technical education, and subject matter experts, SME, in that order. And I wanted to highlight that non-certificated persons represented 16% of the adjudications in 2024. And so that number is substantially higher than what we saw in 23. And this really reflects that the timeline being varied for all of these cases. We're just seeing these cases come in in 2024. And here we are tracking the category of misconduct. This as well follows a hierarchy where an educator might have a few different categories of misconduct, but we consider sexual offenses the primary priority. Additionally, the investigators investigate these cases as soon as they come in and really prioritize that in their caseload. And then after that, we have assault, non-sexual related cases. After that, we have substance-related, then theft or fraud, and then finally breach of the teaching contract. In 2024, 45% of the cases were associated with assaulted behaviors, while 29% were linked to sexual offenses. This is a slight flip of the trend that we typically saw, where sexual offenses were the highest category case for many years. It's flipping a little bit here with this assault. The assault does not necessarily mean that this is something that has occurred in the classroom. It could be out-of-classroom behavior that has occurred. And here we have the type of disciplinary action. You'll see that there is some uptick in the trend, but overall, what type of adjudications are occurring with the board remain more or less the same, with surrenders representing the highest proportion of cases. Surrenders are offered to every educator that comes under investigation. And it makes sense that some might want to take that action, and then that comes to the board immediately. Other types of action that could occur are revocations, suspensions. These might be actions that come before a P-PAC recommendation that you're reviewing. As well, there are the negotiated settlement agreements, requests for review and rehearing that we've seen. And then different administrative, like the 1307, 1309 type of suspensions and revocations. And then I wanted to leave with highlighting some of the things that we're trying to do to move this forward so that we're catching discipline before the action has happened, rather than after the fact. Some of the preventative preventive measures is to ensure that mandatory reporting training is occurring, and there's awareness of of these different types of behaviors that could be happening, especially around, I think, the the training that has been done by the enforcement action unit on grooming-type behavior and really bringing awareness around that. We'd also like to increase the access to this ethics NASDAQ model code of ethics training. Right now, that is something that has to be paid for by the educator. It would be great to align into a place where we could develop our own training that is offered for free. We continue to work with our educator preparation programs. This has expanded beyond our traditional colleges to those other types of programs, including the classroom-based. And so some next steps, there are some data pieces that I would like your input on, whether those would be points of information that would be helpful to you. The in-classroom versus out-of-classroom misconduct, the compliance with negotiated settlement agreements. That's something that we have administrative staff that is now tracking and supporting. And then misconduct involving non-certificated individuals, as well as any of the trends that I highlighted on the rates of discipline by different types of teaching certificates or gender and things. I'd like to highlight for everybody listening to you, look at the resources for educators, resources for educator professionals that are on our website. And then if there's ever an opportunity, Dr. Clay, to present to me this information to the county superintendents, we are happy to do that as well, as well as the Charter Association, and staying in connection with them whenever we need to. And that is what I would leave off. So any questions?
Thank you so much for your presentation, Jessica. Dr. Webke.
First of all, great presentation, very informative. I had a couple of questions. When you say less than 1% of the certificated employees, is that all certificated employees? Not employees, all certificated people versus those that are currently working in classrooms in schools?
It is all certificated people. We treat it, oh, sorry, President Haley, Superintendent Horn, and Member Webke. It's all all valid status certificates. So we treat it as anybody who could enter the classroom and get a job that day. And the reason we do that is because substitutes can have that occur at any moment. And we are happy to also look at that, what that rate is for those teaching and see if there's differences that were
That would be interesting. That's all, you know. It would just be interesting. I'll put, leave it at that. I am curious on that one slide about out-of-classroom misconduct. Can you tell, can you elaborate a little bit more what out-of-classroom means? Does that mean out of the classroom but still on school property? Or does it mean out out of, out in the community?
Yeah, thank you, President Haley, Superintendent Horn, and Member Webke. That is information that is tracked as out in the community when the investigative report is filed.
Thank you.
Dr. Clay.
Thank you. President Haley and members of the board. I would definitely like to say thank you for this amazing presentation. It stops us from running in the sand, and it's, it gives us traction on what we, especially as superintendents, needs to do to make to reduce the problems that we have at the schools. As far as you, including the superintendent, especially the county superintendents, that is big. That is huge, because the county superintendents have a bigger perspective, a wider perspective on what's going on in each of the counties. I will definitely make sure that you're either at the next meeting next month, that which is the first of June, first week of June, or the meeting after that. This is very, very important. We appreciate you and all your work. Thank you very much. That's all I have.
Dr. Hightower.
Thank you so much, President Haley, and thank you for the great presentation. It is good to know that it is less than 1%, and then yet, at the same time, just 1% is way too many. I also know that within the purview of the State Board of Ed, there's the policy, there's the regulatory, the annual updates are helpful, and then also the investigative. But I'm wondering if other partnerships with organizations like the Trust or others that can actually provide the training to schools across the state would be would be helpful, because the team, even though it has increased, is still a small team.
Yeah, thank you, President Haley, Superintendent Horn, and Member Hightower. I think that is a helpful note, using something where we can train these trainers to disseminate the message and and get it out about what's happening would be helpful.
President Haley, Superintendent Horn, members of the board, Dr. Hightower, just to add to Jessica, what Jessica said. The board has built over the last couple of years, a educator resource page in which we house documents produced by our team. But as you said, we're a small team, and this is a policymaking body, so we don't really have the training staff. Though our our chief investigator and enforcement director do go out and train quite a bit. So we've built this this iterative page with resources, and one of the things we've done from the start is reach out to partners, to other stakeholders, including the Trust, educator prep programs, Arizona Educators Association, anybody who has trainings, NASDAQ, that are either free or at cost, and we house them all on this page. We wanted to, we want to build kind of a one-stop shop. And then we, when our, when our chief investigator and our enforcement director go out and train, they'll go into educator prep programs, and they'll train the teacher candidates, and they'll go to that page. They'll show them things to review. They train beyond that, but that's one of the things we really focus on. So that's a, yeah, great suggestion and something we are working diligently on.
Thank you.
Any other questions from board members? I did pick up something interesting in your report, Jessica, the Google alert. How do you all get those? I thought that was really interesting.
Thank you, President Haley, Superintendent Horn, and members. Actually, I think we all as staff use them for different notifications that we want to see. So the investigators themselves, the lead investigators and the chief, as well as our Director of Enforcement Actions, have these alerts set on specific keywords like misconduct, educator, some, and whatever the type of category of case, like arrested for DUI. And those will ping and trigger and send them a notification, and they can go read what that news report was, see if they might already have a case open, which often occurs, or, you know, see about the process for getting us a complaint to open, file.
Very helpful. I was like, they have 60,000 alerts with all the different educators that have been approved. Oh, my goodness, that would be a lot. Well, this is fantastic. I really appreciated some of the recommendations that you men mentioned, and including how can we make sure this gets into on the preventive measures, how this can get into the hands of many. So thanks for your hard work, and of course, we are very, very grateful for not only the investigative unit, but also the P-PAC and the work that they do. So thank you. Okay, moving on to item 5F. Well, now, this is where Policy Director Yanis will provide us an update on legislation before the board. Or legislation before the legislature that we might want to consider at the board or something. Exactly.
Good afternoon, President Haley, Superintendent Horn, members of the board. I do not envy having to follow Jessica today, but I'll keep this presentation brief for us. I wanted to change up the format a little bit from some of the previous months, just because we are moving a little bit further into legislative session, hopefully by, I'm hopeful by the next meeting, I'll be able to to present to everyone on budget considerations and hopefully a past budget. So for for this meeting, I wanted to cover a few of the bills that have been chapped. This is not exhaustive by any means. I actually wanted to cover one additional bill, too, that I had missed on this presentation to start. So most recently, a House Bill 2170 was passed and and signed by the Governor's Office. This was the dyslexia bill that we were following. And this legislation requires that IEPs must add a determination as to whether or not a child with a disability has a dyslexia diagnosis within the plan. Following from that, we have Senate Bill 1502, which is the literacy endorsement bill that we had been following, and Member Kevikis had highlighted in a previous meeting, this reached the governor's signature as well. Additionally, we have Senate Bill 1659, which was the State Board Allegations Bill that we had mentioned in a previous meeting as well. This legislation requires the board to send over information related to allegations of misconduct for educators to specified staff within school districts or charters. It's important to note that this is a, this is a practice that our investigative unit has already been holding to. Although having this piece in statute is helpful, sort of guiding force in in reinforcing that practice and in continuity. We also have Senate Bill 1689. This was the legislation that Sean had mentioned during the receivership presentation that just speeds up the process a little bit, allows the department to be more involved in initiating the process to to hopefully assist us in moving forward to those necessary hearings on a timely manner. We also have SB 1106 on public entity liability. This was a rerun bill from last year. It has to do with opening up a little bit of liability. It's very specified and tailored to sexual offenses that occur essentially when the public entity should have known that something was occurring or that there was an act omitted by the personnel. As far as SB 1358, this was a bill that was worked really heavily on by the charter board staff. So I thank them a ton, as well as the the DPS. This was the federal ratback services bill where the board was contacted by the FBI in relation to defining charter positions in a in a clear fashion, in order so that we would be able to continue adjudicating discipline for public personnel and receiving their fingerprint clearance checks and allowing us to continue services through DPS for federal ratback to ensure that we can maintain those background services. SB 1437, covering mandatory reporting. This was one of the larger educator discipline bills that was moving this year, and it shores up some mandatory reporting law around school board members, as well as put some restrictions around whether reporting can be essentially satisfied through reporting to an SRO or an SSO on campus. So that no longer is the case. So that's something that the the it's not within the board's responsibility, but I'm sure that we'll be working with stakeholder groups to to ensure that we're doing our part and messaging that to LEAs within our capacity. It also outlines additional procedures for just school investigations and interviews. That's also outside of our purview, but within the educator discipline space. And then finally, we have these final three bills. House Bill 2540 is a statewide assessment bill. This permits students the ability to opt out of essentially the the nationally accredited assessment. So for us, it would be the the ACT if they take it outside of a school setting. And then they would submit that score that they've taken outside of a school setting for accountability purposes. ADE already has a process in place for receiving these score submittals. So they'll just expand that from their administrative side, as well as on our side of things as it relates to accountability and for LEAs. My understanding is that when we looked at the current submittals and the assumed submittals, that this would most likely be the highest achievers. So if we have, you know, students that are submitting those scores outside of So if we have, you know, students that are submitting those scores outside of the school setting, that we wouldn't see essentially a significant downside for LEAs as it relates to the types of students that would opt out with those scores. Additionally, we have House Bill 2074 on school safety proposals and assessment plans. This was a revision that was a couple of years coming to the school safety program. It just includes SSOs under that grant, allows for an expanded alternative program, proposals that follow a specific process and also lay out what sort of items and materials can be purchased in lieu of the already approved materials, and then also adds additional training requirements for officers that would be working on school campuses. Lastly, the the final bill I wanted to highlight, a little bit outside of the the board purview, but it expands the Arizona Teachers Academy and the eligible post-secondary institutions to community colleges that offer baccalaureate programs to students that are looking to become educators in Arizona. And it also removes the requirement that community colleges would have to be engaged with like an ABOR contract or agreement to access the funding. So that is, like I said, it's not an exhaustive list, but I, I wanted to cover some of the the bills that affected the board most closely, as well as some bills that we had previously been tracking that are assistive to our board and staff. If there's any questions, I'm, I'm open to them right now.
Dr. Cor.
Just a quick addition or maybe clarification on the baccalaureate for community colleges, teacher academy. It, it does not expand the funding available, just more folks eligible, so just more straws in the drink, but the drink hasn't gotten any larger.
Yes, that is the case. There, yeah, there was no funding attached to that. It's just the
Any other questions, Member Kevikus?
Not a question, just wanted to shout out, we, there's some really great legislation this year for kids with disabilities. And specifically on 2074, I know that that was a department's bill, but with Representative Grass was gracious over the past couple of years, we fought to get a provision in there that SROs have to be trained on how to identify and work with students with disabilities, which is a big provision, so.
Member Hightower?
Thank you so much for the presentation. I just have a clarifying question, and I'm sure you're going to be sharing this information with the rest of the schools in the state. So Senate Bill 1437 prohibits reporting to an SRO from satisfying duty to report. So the schools that have the fortune of having the safety grant and have safety resource officers in their schools, typically those safety resource officers would provide the report number when they, when the school officials provide a report. So do you, what, do you have more information on that, and would they have to call the whatever city's police department to report it?
I, I probably wouldn't be the best person to answer that. I can reach out to some of the stakeholder groups that we work with that would be more closely involved in the, the, the local education process, as far as what the LEAs are considering when they make those determinations. Like I said, that, that piece is a little bit outside of the, just the, the board's specific purview, although with sort of the, the stakeholder groups that we have set up within the investigative unit and how we interact with the field. Once we have more information, we're happy to assist LEAs and using the board as a, as soundboard to make sure that all those processes are shored up with the individual site level stuff. So I'll follow up with you after as well, once I, we're able to get a little bit more information on that.
Thank you so much, Rico. And of course, I'm thinking as a former school superintendent, the logistical piece to that, even with a city, or different cities, police departments, where they're going to refer them back to the SRO. Well, don't you have an SRO? Why, you know, why are you calling us to ask for an additional report? But, so that will be interesting in the logistical piece for, for schools, and then also on the students that are able to opt out of nationally recognized statewide assessments, and then the requirement of schools in having a certain percentage, which is a pretty high percentage of students tested, and what the implications will be on that as well.
That, that one, I can provide a little bit more context for you, Member Hightower. As far as the, the federal requirements for testing, after discussing this legislation with the Department of Education staff, they had commented that this opt out wouldn't affect the, the 95% or the 1% on the testing requirements.
Any other questions for members of the board? Last question for me is Prop 123. Any updates there?
As far as, as far as I'm aware, without jumping into rumors or hearsay, I, I don't have much of an update on Prop 123. I know that it's still, it still has been part of discussions around the legislature, although I can't say with confidence where where it's headed, aside from the, something that I can share with the board that is separate from, I guess, a direct Prop 123, then kind of where it's at response, is that the, the president, or not the president, the, the current proposal that was being weighed was something that was additional funding to K-12. But it's not, essentially, it was being proposed as, whereas in the past, Prop 123 was something that was assisting in, in maintaining constitutional requirements for K-12 funding and inflationary raises for, you know, baseline. The current proposal was supplemental for teacher pay. So as far as what schools are required to be paid on an annual basis, the, the state is still required to pull that from the general fund. So in lieu of Prop 123 moving forward, if it expires at the end of the fiscal year, there hopefully would be some assurances that, that essentially, that now this money is coming from the general fund, because Prop 123 is now no longer funding for K-12. And if it were to move forward in its current state, that, that would be supplemental and in addition for teacher pay and the considerations that are currently in the bill, that is separate from what its current intention is, as it's currently functioning in law.
Thank you so much, Policy Director Yanis. All right, we are now moving to item six. This is a call to the public. This is the time for the public to comment on items on today's consent portion of the enforcement actions. As a reminder, the board does not respond directly to the call to the public. Additionally, speakers are not allowed to cede their time to another speaker, and personal attacks are not appropriate. Today, we'll limit remarks to two minutes. And with that, Deputy Director DePlante, have we had any requests to speak?
President Haley, Superintendent Horn, members of the board, nobody has registered for this call to the public.
Okay, then I would like to move to item seven. This is the consent agenda. This is certification enforcement actions. And I'd like to take all of these in a single motion. Do we have a motion to approve items 7A1 through 7A11, 7B1, 7C1, and 7C2?
I move approval as presented.
We have a motion. Do we have a second?
Second.
We have a second. All in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Aye. Any opposed? All right, moving to item eight. This is a call to the public. This is a time for the public to comment on items on the general session portion of the enforcement actions. As a reminder, the board does not respond directly during the call to the public. Additional speakers are not allowed to cede their time to another speaker, and personal attacks are not appropriate. Given the time today, we would like to limit all speakers to two minutes. And with that, Deputy Director DePlante, have we received any requests to speak?
President Haley, Superintendent Horn, members of the board, yes, we have. First up is Bridget Vega, followed by Ryan Ridenhour, followed by Lisa Reed. Bridget?
Good morning, members of the State Board. I stand before you as a concerned mother and a voice for the children. Today, you will hear from an individual who will claim to be a victim, arguing that his due process rights were violated and treated unfairly. But let me be clear, the real injustice here is not the one he is alleging. It's the failure responsibility that he chose to ignore. Instead of preparing each night to ensure the next day was a success for the students under his care, he chose to engage in actions beneath the professional and, and ethical standards we expect of our educators. We choose to have, or he chose to have inappropriate, below the belt, sexual relations. This was not a momentary lapse in judgment, but a pattern of negligence and failure to uphold his duties. He once was part of CUSD, allowed a predator to go unchecked, someone who later allegedly sexually assaulted a 15-year-old in another district. How many lives continue to be affected by inaction and negligence of the children he was meant to protect? We cannot lose sight of the bigger picture of integrity of our education system and holding ourselves to higher standards of accountability. As a community, we demand transparency. We urge the board to revoke his certification. Your decision today sends a message. We will protect our children and not tolerate negligence and misconduct. History will remember who stood with the children and who stood by negligence. What's done in the dark will come to light. God prevails. Thank you.
President Haley, Superintendent Horn, members of the board, next up is Ryan Ridenhour, followed by Lisa Reed, followed by Darrell Reed. Brian?
President Haley, Superintendent Horn, and members of the board, I am Ryan Ridenhour. I hope each of you had the opportunity to read my letter I submitted on May 9, in which I explained the concerns of P-PAC and respectfully request that they reject or modify the recommendation regarding the the case C2023-002374. If you've not read yet, or already done, done so, please read my letter in short, hearing transcript, before you decide on my future. I am before you today to share a piece of my personal journey, once one that I briefly mentioned in my letter. But since the incident which, which led to the hearing, I've taken intentional steps to be a better version of myself. I have spent every opportunity building my relationship with my incredible wife. I spent a year out of education and committed to counseling and mentorship. I've read, listened, and learned in ways I've never done before. I've had hard conversations with others, and most importantly, with myself. I've taken responsibility for the past and the way I affected the people I love the most. Over the past 30 years, I've worked as a teacher and administrator. I've made many important and positive differences in students' lives, staff, and the communities where I've worked. The poor choice I made in 2023 did not involve any students. I would very much appreciate the opportunity to continue being a valuable member of the public, the public school employee. While I've fully accepted responsibility for my actions, I remain dismayed and disheartened by the lack of due process I was afforded in the P-PAC hearing. Instead of the case being heard by a fair and impartial panel, three of the, three of the six P-PAC members and the hearing officer are involved in the consolidated hearing from 2025. As you know, on March 24, 2025, the board determined that the consolidated hearing did not provide me or others with meaningful due process and ordered the new hearings. I just, I hope that we can look at these cases separately.
President Haley, Superintendent Horn, members of the board, next up is Lisa Reed, followed by Darrell Reed, followed by online David Hazelton. Lisa?
Good morning to the board, I mean, good afternoon to the board, I'm sorry. My name is Lisa Reed. I'm coming before you because I've been, I was accused, and I did commit the crime of abduction of a child under the age of 12. This was in the state of Maryland in 1989. Since then, my record has been a sponge. I have worked closely with Scott, who worked for the school board, who's been going through my records, and I've been in contact with him for the last year and a half, turning in paperwork, going back and forth from Arizona to the state of Maryland, clearing my name. I did clear my name, and I did get an expungement for this crime. I was never found guilty for the crime. It was dress dropped to the waist size. I don't know, out of the last 36 years, why they had never brought me back to court. It was 34 years when I've started another quest. I've been gone since 2000. Before then, my husband could tell you, I've been with my husband for the last 36 years. So he's been on this quest, and we've been trying to clear my own name. The daughter that I'm speaking about, she has passed away. She passed away four years later from a car accident. She's no longer here with me. I know it was a crime that I did commit against her. My husband and I had, my first husband and I had a tumultuous relationship. He took out these charges against me while we were still married. As of that, I didn't know. I did turn myself in. They fingerprinted me. We let go. I went to court. Nothing else happened after that point. I've been with my husband now for the last 36 years. I have took myself and educated myself. I spent last 12 years from 2012 to 2022, receiving an associate, two bachelors, and a master's degree. I've walked, worked for Walt Disney World and have retired. I worked there for 16 and a half years at Walt Disney World. I also worked in the school districts that's paraprofessional. I also worked with the mentally disabled. So I've worked around children all my life, and this has never came up to be a problem. I've never taken another child. I have never done anything grievous to another kid. I'm really sorry for my actions today, and I thank you for your time and your efforts, and I wish you consider all of our done since that point of time. Thank you.
President Haley, Superintendent Horn, members of the board, next up is Darrell Reed, followed by David Hazelton. Darrell?
Good afternoon, board. Last, as I was saying, my name is Darrell Reed. I'm the husband of Lisa Reed right now. I'm calling, I'm talking up here to talk to you about her. She is, as she said, that she did do this, she did do the things, but in the, in the meantime, she has been a good person. She has, far as the community goes, she is very active. She has been active in our communities. She had worked with at-risk kids before. Right now, she is work, she is currently teaching and guiding prisoners right now in the prison system, showing them how they can change their mindset and how things are now in the world, showing them how they can, you know, so they won't go back into the crime, go back into the prison system. She also, like she said, she has, she has two, she has two bachelors, one associate and one masters. She, she's, you know, during that time with her first husband, it was a tremendous divorce that, that took place. He was always, you know, denying her her right to see the child and everything. So yes, she, like she, she, like she said, she did took, she didn't take the child, she just didn't file to bring him back when the when visiting, when a visitation was over with. But outside of that, she, she has been an upstanding citizen. She has been, you know, never gotten no, she had never gotten in trouble. Like she said before, we, we did try to, we did work on it. We did try to, did everything. She did turn herself in. They told her that, at the time, she didn't have nothing. So when this came up, this was a totally big shock to us. But yes, she, we did do the, the things that necessary, so we can get, put this behind us. Thank you for your time.
President Haley, Superintendent Horn, members of the board, our final speaker is David Hazelton.
Hello, board members. My name is David Hazelton. I'm the Director of Creative Services for the Chronicle of Higher Education here in Washington, DC. I'm also an adjunct professor at West Virginia University and a proud graduate of Arizona State University. I first met Lisa Reed in 2006, when she was employed at the Walt Disney Company. Over the past 19 years, Lisa has demonstrated a deep commitment to personal growth and education. She has pursued her academic career with earning an associate degree in 2015, two, two bachelor's degrees in 2019, and a master's degree in 2022. Her path reflects not only the perseverance, but a genuine appreciation of learning and self-improvement. What stands out most about Lisa is her humility, kindness, and strength of character. She meets challenges with grace and uses them as opportunities to grow. Her journey is a testament to what can be achieved through resilience and purpose. I wholeheartedly affirm Lisa Mae Reed as a person of integrity, compassion, and strong character. She has a positive influence in any environment and a a strong example of the power of education to transform lives. Thank you.
President Haley, Superintendent Horn, members of the board, that concludes this call to the public.
With that, we will move to item nine. Is there an item or items from the consent agenda that a board, what member would like to pull and discuss?
President Haley, we're taking 9A, B, and C both together.
Yes, but I'm first gonna ask if there are any, any items to pull. Any, nope. Seeing that there are none, I would like to take a single vote, and that would be to approve items 9A1 through 9A4, 9B1, and 9C1. Do I have a motion?
I move approval as presented.
Do I have a second?
Second.
Dr. Clay makes the second. All in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? So with that, we'll now move to item 10. Just a quick announcement, the next regular board meeting will be Monday, June 23rd at 9:00 AM. Any other announcements from Executive Director Ross?
Uh, Member, President Haley, Superintendent Horn, members of the board, no, that, no, no additional notes.
Okay, well, with that, the meeting is called, is adjourned at 1:30 PM.